I would say that's better. Call this meeting of Tacoma Park City Council or order. Excuse me, will Clark please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grimes. Councilmember Mayle.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Seamen.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
And Councilmember Grimes will be here about 7:30. Excuse me, the first item on our agenda is a presentation by the Commemoration Commission. They're gonna give us their first report back after their creation and then we'll have an opportunity for a little brief discussion with them. So, welcome.
Good afternoon, good evening. For the record, Richard O'Connor, 7110 Maple Avenue, co-chair of the Commemoration Commission.
Jessica Kessler, 7214 Central Avenue, Ward 2. I am also a member of Commemoration Commission, co-chair.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and review our report that we have presented to you. Just briefly, the Commemoration Commission was established in November of 2014 by Council Action. The Commission began deliberations on, in early March of 2014.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, that's right. And we have met about seven or eight times during that period. We split up and did some work on researching various aspects of commemoration programs. And as outlined here, we have presented to you for comments and consideration what we propose for the first phase of commemoration programs. As you recall, legislation established three levels of recognition levels. The first level was a citywide level, the second is neighborhood or local level, and third a personal recognition. And the recommendations that we've presented here are for that third phase. We felt that it would be wise to get going on something that we could get into place quickly and have up and running. And we will be back to you with additional recommendations on the other phases as we go forward. I don't know if the council wants us to just briefly go through the proposed programs.
Dance through those.
Okay. We're proposing four separate recognition programs under the personal recognition. The first is a bench and commemorative plaque program. There are approximately 65 existing benches throughout the city. We have somewhat inventoried them, but not fully inventoried them.
Formally.
And we keep finding more benches as we keep looking. This, the intent of this is to provide a platform whereby somebody could buy a plaque, a commemorative plaque, and that plaque would be then placed on an existing bench. We envision that these benches will be numbered. People then can use those numbers to determine where they are and how they want to get them. And we've identified and laid out costs associated with that. In our deliberations, we've gone around and around on a variety of different options with regards to how to price the program. And one of the charges that this council gave to us was that this program is to be self-funded. And so, we've looked at that with great care in designing a program that is hopefully going to cover the costs and then
Of administering.
Of administering the program and also of buying the plaques, buying the new benches if we go that route, buying the trees, and then also providing some maintenance funds for long-term of these plaques. So, we've identified that and that we'd like to get some feedback and reactions from council on those proposed fees that we have outlined. The second program that we've outlined is a tree and commemorative plaque program. This would be existing trees whereby an individual could buy a plaque that would be placed in front of the tree and
On a stone.
On a stone, on some
Sort of semi-permanent structure.
Right. And then the third program that we've talked about is a new bench program and commemoratives if there are individuals who wish to have new benches placed in the city. We've identified that as a program that would be available. And then the fourth and final program is a new tree program where you could have a new tree and a plaque would be placed on a stone in front of the tree. So, with that, we've, you know, opened it up for comments and questions.
Thanks for the work so far. One question I had was, I think particularly on the benches, you talk about two plaques per bench.
Correct.
So, it's like divide the bench in half and put a plaque on this half and a plaque on this half?
It's envisioned that the plaques would be one above the other, in the middle.
There, we've seen other towns where they've done the same. It would just be a part of the cost, you know, it would be a shared bench. So, it would be less expensive than having a bench to yourself.
The comments that we've gotten when we've had some discussions about this is that there are, while there are 65 benches in the city, some are in more prominent locations than other benches. And thus, there's going to be an interest in having a bench. In other words, we provide the opportunity for those who wish to have a bench in a more prominent location, more opportunities for that by adding two plaques per bench.
But it could be if you chose a location that's a little bit more out of the way and said you wanted a plaque on that bench, you could end up with just that plaque on that bench.
You could, correct, right. And the one thing that we have recommended is that there be a certificate, a commemoration certificate that would be issued by the Commission and that the plaque and/or the bench would be for a limited period of time, a five-year, 10-year, or 20-year. And we've phased in the costs associated with that. The reason for that is that what happens five years from now? If the city, you know, has stopped the program, at least then we can terminate the program at that point. Or the individual may decide that they don't want to have long-term. And it's been recommended to us that we not have a long-term 40-year, 50-year bench program.
The expectation that it be forever.
Yeah, right. And there are costs associated with forever. And so, we've tried to institute a process whereby the consumer can choose the length of time that they wish to have their plaque.
And just one other general question. Did you say anything about how you envision kind of the public access to keeping track of all this so that people can find things or, you know, the kind of the record-keeping of how all this happens?
Yeah, Diana's been talking about having a database of these commemorative plaques and along with other sites in Tacoma Park. It's something at Tacoma Wiki that she's been working on.
Correct.
Yeah. And that would be, a part of that would be this particular program. So, it would be accessible on the Tacoma Park. This is not something that we fully hashed out, but this is an idea that's been floated around and be accessible on the city's website.
So, it's envisioned that somebody who was looking, who knew that somebody had a plaque in Tacoma Park, they could go and find information on that without having to contact the Commemoration Commission or
Correct.
Right.
Or call the city and say, where is this? They could find it.
Yeah, that is one of the reasons for the committee in the first place. But it would, yes, the Tacoma Wiki that Diana's working on, I believe with GW, is, you know, would be the resource for that. It would be self-service.
Good, thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, thank you for this and your work on it. I just had a question and I apologize if it's in here and I didn't see it. If after, say, five or 10 years, someone didn't want to, or the family or whatever, didn't want to continue it, are you going to take the plaque off or wait till the plaque comes off?
We envision that if you buy a five-year plaque, you get a five-year plaque and we would then take it off and return it to you.
And they definitely can renew if they want to renew. But it would just give more opportunity for more, you know, basically revenue generation and just, we were also keeping in mind making the program as affordable as possible for as many of people in Tacoma Park as possible. And we thought this was one way of making it more inclusive.
And then you'll give the plaque to them.
Right, exactly.
Return the plaque, they or their heirs or whoever
Whoever.
They designate.
And I guess for me, it's a little hard to give too much feedback on the cost. I have no idea how much a plaque actually costs. And I look to city staff regarding any feedback about maintenance and other things to be able to have some feedback on prices.
Let me bring back some information for you. I will say that plaques are expensive, just the nature of them seem to be. But, and maintenance of the actual plaques are usually not the issue unless somebody completely runs into a tree or, you know, graffiti's actually usually not a terrible thing that
Really?
They're usually covered pretty well, so they're not too hard to clean. It has more to do with people like running and, you know, crashing into a bench or something like that, that you just need to restore that. One issue that I just know is that we have some plaques in the building, have had some in the past. We have no idea who the people are. They were found someplace, people bring them in. They probably were important to somebody at some point. So, I really like the idea that there's a defined end time and that that can be returned to the family, you know, if that family has moved on or whatever, that there's a way to not just have something sit there and then really just not have a sense of who it belongs to and why. And, you know, having that history though, in the records, it will also be useful.
Because I know that's not a problem.
But, there's nothing sadder than having this nice plaque and not knowing what to do with it.
Well, we've did extensive research on the pricing of our, of this particular program. It's based on the actual price. Dick especially did a lot of research on the cost of the benches themselves and the plaques and how much it would cost to engrave it. And it's also based on programs throughout the country. We looked nationally from, Greenbelt actually has a very extensive program, New York City, Charleston, I think Newton as well.
Newton, yes.
Yeah, a lot of there, we collected a lot of materials in our research. But it's pretty much on par with most of those. It's a fair price. Benches run about.
A new bench would probably be close to 500, right, for a new bench.
And we spoke, we've spoken with Daryl in regards to getting public workers engaged with this because their buying is very essential to the success of this program.
And is it envisioned that when a plaque gets retired and returned to somebody, that it goes off the rolls and there's no record of it anymore? Or will there always be a record that there was?
There would always be a record. The space for the plaque will then be up for sale.
But if somebody says, gee, there was a plaque for so-and-so and it was removed 10 years ago, you'll be able to tell them that?
That's what we envision is having a permanent database that
Great.
We can go to not only the future plaques who are purchased, but we envision over the next year doing an inventory of all the plaques and all the commemoratives that the city has. And there are hundreds, as many of my fellow council members know. Many of them downstairs at the present time. So, what we're envisioning is getting, working with an intern group from GW University in their historic preservation program over the next six months, who will be basically helping us to do these inventories and pull this database together. We also might be getting the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts in town involved also in this as an educational program on who these people were and what they did for the city and how many mayors were there. So.
Councilmember Schultz.
I really want to thank you for your diligence. This Commission, having gotten started in March, got, you know, down to business. Dick, as you know, Bruce and I served on the committee that helped formulate the parameters of what this Commission should try to be able to do with Howard Coens. He was part of that as well. And all of this came, I think, I will lay claim to it was my original idea to get this thing going until somebody else
I'll fight you for it.
Okay, I'll meet you up back behind the flagpole.
It was my idea.
In any case.
We'll put that in the record.
Well, he's not going to be around much longer, so he's going to lose this argument.
But it will be in the record, so.
But anyway.
No comment.
Thank you. The documentation electronically is also works in reverse. If somebody says, there's this bench, it's got somebody's name on it, curious to know who is this person? And you'll have that information. And it might be possible that whoever is the commemorator, you know, the one that puts down the money and says, I want a plaque for so-and-so, such-and-such a bench, that in this electronic file, that some word, some information might be able to be supplied to explain some context for who this person was, one or two sentences or something.
That's why historic Tacoma being involved is very essential for that.
But I think that would be great.
Lucky to have Diana on.
Because when you spend some money to commemorate somebody like a lost loved one, it would be nice to be able to have something there that would last for a really long time. And of course, we all agreed that being able to sunset these memorials was essential because, well, it just wouldn't work any other way. I'm a bit puzzled about being able to sell the bench twice. Would it be possible, say, if I wanted to commemorate someone X, I said that, you know, I'll put it on such-and-such a bench and all that, but that's my bench. I don't want anybody else putting the plaque on it. Would that be part of the process or would it be sort of like, well, that's not how we do it?
For existing benches, what we've said is that if you want exclusivity to that bench, then you're going to buy two plaques.
You're going to buy two?
Cost is two plaques.
Okay.
And you can have then, the revision of plaque sizes would be five inch by two inch. That's a standard plaque size that the engraving companies use.
Okay.
You then have a plaque which would be five inches by four inches. And you can have six, up to six lines.
Oh, cool.
So, that's what we envision, the cost associated with that incremental addition of the second bench is basically going to be a cost of maintenance. And we believe that the city needs to establish, you know, a fund that will
Oh, I agree. I absolutely agree.
Not as a separate fund, we've looked at that, the legal implications of setting up a separate fund. But what we've discussed with city staff is the establishment of a line item or a set aside or just an accounting for accounting purposes, that there'd be a maintenance fund as these benches are purchased or the plaques are purchased. It would go, the maintenance money would go into that set aside.
Yeah, okay.
But it can't legally, as I understand it due to state law, be a separate entity.
Well, I know, I had thought of it like an endowment. But if we can't do that, then we can at least have a sub-fund in the budget so that we can judge if this program is in fact sustaining itself or it's not.
Absolutely.
And that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And I think that's where we want to be able to make sure that, hopefully that this will, there will be, it'll be at break even or close to it in terms of that it's not going to become a profit center for the city, wouldn't think. Which, the last question I have is that, looking at the prices and understanding that that there's going to be some people who are going to want to participate in this program but are simply not going to be able to be in a financial position to be able to pay what needs to be done. I think that's probably pretty self-evident. I would imagine you guys have already thought about that. And I'm, so I don't want this program, this program of individual, of plaques, whether they're on benches or trees, to be unreachable by folks, any family or household in the city. So, I, have you, you're nodding, so tell me what's, what you think.
We've discussed having a scholarship fund, this has come up several times. We haven't made any firm decisions about in regards to that. But it's definitely would be, it's definitely part of the discussions that we've been having, that that would be provided, if I remember correctly, free of charge for people based on need.
Yeah, I'd like to.
We hope to have some discussions with the Tacoma Foundation and other scholarship-oriented groups who might be willing to support this type of a program. And it would need to be probably done on a separate basis from the city to be able to get the tax implications so that it is beneficial to the donor. But yes, we've had that discussion and we're going to continue to have and explore it.
Well, that's, that's one solution is just to find donors to help subsidize. But the other would be to set your pricing a little higher than you have so that those of us who can afford it, you build up somewhat of a reserve, in quotes, not really a reserve, but a balance, let's call it that, where you could afford
We've discussed that with staff and there's some hesitancy on the part of staff to have that in, if the money is going into the, into the general fund and you do a set aside, the question then becomes whether or not it is a separate entity within the budget process. And then we get into some state financing regulations that prohibit that. So
I see what you're saying.
I am, I'm open to any suggestions and I welcome it. We've started discussing this, but I don't have a solution and I think we're open.
Okay, no, it's obviously a little bit more complicated than
Right.
What appeared to be on the surface. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, guys, I appreciate this. You know, I sent you an email trying to
Yeah.
Organize a plaque for some residents. And in this particular situation, the land is actually owned by the county. It's county park land. And the county has
This is all on city profit.
Right, right. But the county has the Park Foundation. Is the program, have you guys even considered what they do on the county side and how that relates to what you guys are doing? Because they're doing plaques and benches throughout, you know, Montgomery County. So, I was just curious, is it comparable? Is it different? And would you guys, because, you know, where my ward is, it's close to Saiga Creek Park. So, I mean, you're going to bump into county parks a lot of the time. So, have you guys had any contact with Montgomery County Park Foundation?
We really haven't. I mean, I'm familiar with the, with MCPS's Park Foundation. In my private practice, I've had a number of clients who
Okay, great.
Have donated money through the foundation and have worked to building some ball fields. Again, that's a, that's a separate entity.
Right.
And it's a, it's a nonprofit.
Right.
We could establish a similar nonprofit here in Tacoma Park to do the same type of thing. And that's one of the advantages of having the nonprofit is that the donation can then have some tax benefit to the donor. But we haven't, we haven't had any discussions with them yet.
Okay.
Think we probably should.
Is there going to be a system set up so that residents, if they want the plaque, how do they go about it? Do they send you guys just a general email? Is there going to be a form on the website so people can just fill it out? How do you envision?
The way we envision is there being a form on the website that they can emit. And we would also include a map of the areas that are under our jurisdiction because from our understanding, including county-based parks complicates things and it's a very slow, slow process.
Yes.
So, we're really want to focus on Tacoma Park, city of Tacoma land. And then, you know, as time goes on, we can consider more growth or collaborating more. But really, we wanted to concentrate on the, what we have jurisdiction over currently, but that we're only six months into it, so.
All right.
But believe in long-term vision, so we'll definitely bring it up tomorrow, in tomorrow's meeting.
And so, I envision that most of these recommendations would come from family members, friends. But what if there's like someone in the community that, you know, maybe they're an artist, maybe they don't have any people still living in Tacoma Park, but we want to say something about, you know, their career or what they did in the, in law or medicine? How would we, should a council member recommend that person? Would just any individual recommend the person? And then how would you guys evaluate whether or not you should give them a plaque or?
Well, at this, at this level of recognition, this is personal recognition and what we have identified and defined that as being an individual or a nonprofit organization operating. No businesses or for-profit operations can apply. And they also either have to have lived in the city, live in the city because they can be alive or deceased. And we've had lots of discussions about that, whether this was only going to apply to those who have left us. We decided that it could be, you can give a recognition to somebody who is alive. So, if they live in the city, lived in the city, or had some association with the city. So, at this level, that's a broad spectrum of activity and anybody could make a recommendation and move forward to adopt a plaque for anybody.
Okay.
Under those categories, under that category.
But in terms of what you're talking about with, in terms of like having artistic, you know, expression? That's something that we're going to address in the next, next phase of our discussions because I think that that's a bigger issue. Like, there's a lot of more ideas at play with, you know, what is art, what is tasteful, what works at Tacoma Park?
Right.
You know, like, and it really goes beyond us in the Commemorative Commission because it involves arts, it involves racket, it involves a lot of different areas that we don't have purview over.
Okay.
And we do have a member on the Commission from the Arts and Humanities Committee who's giving us input into that. She's taking the lead on those discussions.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate all of your hard work. This is a great program. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll make a quick comment that I know that you have more experience than you would like to admit in dealing with park and planning, particularly Parks Department, and permissions and maintenance and that whole process of dealing with them. So, I recognize that to any extent that you want to continue to beat your head against that wall, I commend you.
Thanks.
And
I'll tell my shrink that.
And I'll just note that Councilmember Schultz and I were having a friendly argument up here about who could, who could get one bought and the language submitted first and it's, you get to write your own legacy.
There you go. Absolutely, absolutely. That's one, that's one thing we have not been able to gauge yet is the demand for this. And it could be quite large, it could be that we'll get one application.
For writing your own legacy, it could be a large
See, now you see into the mind of politicians.
That's right.
So, thanks for all the work so far and we look forward to continuing to hear back from the Commission about the next levels and about how implementation of the first level goes.
Well, thank you.
And we'll give you the feedback that you've asked. And we'll give you the feedback that you've asked for.
We'd like to, yeah. And what our process is, we hope to, after we hear feedback from you folks on this, we hope to open this up for public discussion and we're going to hold a public meeting on this proposal and hopefully get this adopted by the middle of December and open shop by at least January 15th for the first recognition.
For the existing.
For existing.
Good. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move along to the next item on our agenda. There are no additional agenda items this evening. I'll just note a couple things on some upcoming meetings. On Wednesday, there's the election forum at seven o'clock in this auditorium. The council will be in attendance at the Maryland Municipal League Fall Legislative Conference next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So there, the council meeting next week will be on Thursday, October 27th.
Twenty ninth.
Oh, sorry, 29th. And among items on the agenda there are first reading ordinances, amending the installation of traffic coming on 600 block of Boston Avenue, and amending the city code, the city chapter 11.2 on snow and ice regulations, and a work session on the library renovation proposal. The following Monday, November 2nd, is the day before the election, there will be no city council meeting. Tuesday, November 3rd is election day, polls are open here in this building, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then the last full meeting of this council will be Monday, November 9th. And I'll just note that there are a number of second reading ordinances on that agenda and a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for services for a rent analyst. And then the remarks of the outgoing council member and swearing-in of the new council takes place the following Monday, November 16th, which is, I believe, a month from today. And at this point, I'll take public comments on voting items, we only have one this evening, and that is a special session resolution commenting on the site plan for Taco Bell. And so anybody who wants to comment on that voting item, now is your opportunity to do so. If you come to the podium, identify yourself and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello again. My name's Brandon Butler and I live on Glen Side Drive in New Hampshire Gardens in Ward Six. And I'm here tonight to ask you to represent the long-term interests of our part of town and of the Tacoma Park community at the crossroads along New Hampshire Avenue. MUI and Taco Bell have a fleet of folks representing their interests, a couple of land use attorneys, a restaurant consultants, traffic consultants. And I understand they've, they've been able to obtain from their economic consultant another needs study. The needs study, both the flawed original, the fact that they were allowed to submit a second one, and the very basis of their revisions to be presented tonight strikes to the heart, I think, of both our and I hope some of your concerns about the proposed development. The very flawed original needs study miscounted the number of drive-throughs in the area, right? It failed to account for the many local quick-service restaurants that already serve the kind of food that Taco Bell would serve. And it found community desire for additional fast food restaurants by talking to people in fast food restaurants. So the original needs study did the applicant kind of no favors, though, in at least one respect, in finding that several of the nearby drive-throughs present significant conflicts with vehicular circulation in the surrounding parking lot areas, which is actually kind of the same way that the proposed Taco Bell is cited. It would create problems within the parking lot. So why are these folks here tonight with a new needs study and one that alters the market area from a four-minute drive time to seven-minute drive time? Well, I mean, look, you don't have to be an economist, right? Think about a drive along New Hampshire Avenue South from 495 into DC. Where are all of the drive-throughs? Well, they're all concentrated right there at the crossroads, at University Boulevard's and south through Tacoma Park to Eastern Avenue. Now then think about a drive on University Avenue, I mean, on University Boulevard from Colesville Road east towards Adelphi. Again, where are all the drive-throughs? Well, they're concentrated in that area at the crossroads and sort of a mile toward Hyattsville, toward Riggs. When MUI's needs study blows up the market area radius from four minutes' drive to seven minutes' drive, they're not getting a lot, a lot of new drive-throughs, they're getting a lot of new consumers, and so they're building in new demand. They're grabbing residential neighborhoods and, again, adding demand without adding supply. So, right, it's clever, it's what I would do, right? We need to generate more supply, so we just blow up the map. The simple fact that MUI can come here tonight with brand-new facts supports the conclusion that we've been working with a very flawed and subjective need criteria so far. And now more than ever, we need you guys to represent us and what we actually do need to see past the fake facts and, and do what I think your constituents have asked you to do, which is to acknowledge that we can do better than a drive-through Taco Bell. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak about the resolution commenting on the site plan for Taco Bell?
I'm Brian Rostran, I live at 8,000 Wildwood Drive. I was here last week. Again, I would urge the council not to approve Taco Bell. As we said, the issues are fundamentally zoning and planning. Residents strongly support the sector plan and its reasonable implementation, we've heard that. We want growth, we want development, we want transit-oriented and pedestrian-oriented development to stop the alarming number of pedestrian fatalities and accidents. We also agree, I think everyone agrees, that the drive-through is not consistent with the vision of sector plan. No one's disputed that. If zoning is the issue, and that's a big if, then city and city council really need to update the zoning for the overlay or other appropriate mechanisms such that we can implement the sector plan. Next point, the needs study. Well, apparently we now have a new needs study because in all honesty, the previous needs study was so problematic and flawed, it really was. Again, the issue of saturation. Let's be very honest, the crossroads is in many respects a very thriving business community. We have many useful businesses. On the other hand, we have an excess, a surplus, a surfeit of certain types of businesses. So for example, let's be very honest, you know, discount furniture stores, greasy carryout joints, sketchy laundromats, and fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, we have too many. If you actually look at businesses in the sector, these type of businesses are not doing well. We have too many. We need more useful businesses. We need grocery stores, we need stores that sell clothing, we need hardware stores. You know, people in this sector want pedestrian and transit-oriented growth. In order to have that, we need to have stores, businesses, where we can shop and buy really useful goods and services. We don't have that. You know, no one is clamoring for another fast food restaurant with a drive-through in the sector. By any reasonable standard, we already have too many, as has been noted. The next point, the current process has, you know, council members have explained and stated, has considerable ambiguity. Well, in all honesty, I think that's a good thing, at least for the present. You know, we've requested clarification, we've gotten clarification from the planning commission, which I think helps our case. Ambiguity in this case really allows for flexibility. It allows for reasonable interpretation, honestly. We don't want, in all honesty, at this point, a fixed mechanistic, you know, algorithm to determine the number of drive-through restaurants that we can bear. We want reasonable interpretation, we want the city council to lead that way, you know. We have too many drive-through restaurants, we have too much traffic, we have too many pedestrian accidents and fatalities. You know, I think everyone is pretty much in agreement on that. We want the sector plan, we want implemented. Finally, there has been this issue of what developers should take as a message that we as a community want. Well, I think the message, in all honesty, is that we want growth, we want businesses, we want useful businesses. We want businesses that actually comply and make an effort to comply with the sector plan. You know, Taco Bell nationally has, you know, in the last month issued a national press release that began literally, quote, "Taco Bell is dropping the drive-through," announcing their new Cantina product, you know, proposal. They have mechanisms that can fit the sector plan. For whatever reason, MUI does not want to have that kind of growth. That's fine, but, you know, in all honesty, they should go elsewhere and we should be have, we should be able to have the sector plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Melanie, I assist with the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, the 27-year-old business association created down at the crossroads. We represent about 200 businesses in the city south of University Boulevard. And we basically represent the Tacoma Langley Commercial Management District, which is a geographic area. I've been the executive director for almost four years and I want to comment on the Taco Bell proposal. My board of directors, which consists of elected business owners and property owners, did an electronic vote in favor of the Taco Bell proposal, which, which is in compliance with the design guidelines, the Holton Lane Improvement Vision. It will actually green up that parking lot, it will occupy an area that has, is currently trashy and has a lot of illegally parked vehicles for sale. It is much nicer looking than the older Taco Bell architecture. It's close to the street, it will have outdoor seating, it has Wi-Fi and, and it's going to be a place where people will not be shooed away when they want to linger. It is not, it is not what many Ward Six residents would like, and I do understand that. However, there are not a lot of other applicants for, for the kinds of businesses that Ward Six residents would like that come to our area. And I want to give you one example. I think many of you are familiar with Blessed Coffee, which is a community benefit corporation. I met a couple of years ago with the founder, Tababa, and he was looking for space for a coffee roasting operation and a coffee shop. And I encouraged him to apply for space near the Aldi. There's two very large vacant spaces that would have been perfect, deep, be deep enough. He never did anything with it, several years went by. I met with him in the last month, he was anxious to, to look again, he looked at a space on Holton. The space cost the same amount, $4,000, as some space in downtown Silver Spring, which is where he preferred to open his coffee shop. He's not going to open it in the crossroads, even though he would be the only other coffee shop besides Starbucks and I think have a great magnetic draw. I think that, I think that it's incremental improvement, as Fred Schultz wrote, and I think that it's a good interim use for that property by no amount of time.
See, see, someone's got to go.
Somebody go.
Colleen, are you going to talk about the Taco Bell? Are you going to talk about the Taco Bell? They're just doing Taco Bell.
This is still about the, oh, okay. No, I'm not on the Taco Bell.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Stacy Silver with the Law Firm of Lurch Early. I first would like to say thank you to the city and the staff for its professionalism and feedback throughout the review process. Wanted to just make one quick comment in terms of the needs analysis. I just wanted to clarify that the revisions that were done were actually done in response to some questions that were raised, which was why they provided a revised analysis. The seven-minute drive time that was provided to the city was responsive, again, to look at a broader area, to include some additional restaurants that were raised by, by some folks. And it just showed that even when you expand to a larger area, there's still a need for this from an economic perspective in terms of a sales gap. We wanted to just indicate again our appreciation for the community groups and residents who have come out over the last several months to express their support for the proposal. As a result of the comments that we've heard and the efforts of your staff, we are pleased that the project design is able to help implement the recommendations of the sector plan and the guidelines. These include locating the proposed building in exactly the location as shown within the Holton Lane Improvement Vision, providing pedestrian improvements, redeveloping the surface parking lot, providing substantial transparency along the building, adding an outdoor seating area. This building and layout, as it should, will be unique to Tacoma Park and will be in full compliance with requirements. As you know, the site is currently an asphalt impervious parking lot. We are pleased that this project will change that and will add store water management and landscaping where there is none currently. The project recognizes the importance of improving the pedestrian environment and helping to implement the plan by locating the building on both Holton and New Hampshire, and this actually exceeds the requirements of the code. Taking the unusual step of providing direct pedestrian access to the restroom from both Holton Lane and New Hampshire Avenue, adding a bike rack, increasing the sidewalk width of internal and external sidewalks to six feet in width to promote better internal pedestrian circulation and ADA access throughout the site. Incorporating an outdoor seating area along Holton, installing a signalized crossing at New Hampshire and Holton where there is none currently. Installing a new bus pad along New Hampshire to help improve bus usage in the area. Upgrading the state highway ramp at the corner of New Hampshire and Holton Lane to be ADA compliant. And upgrading the sidewalk along Holton to bring it into ADA compliance along the property's frontage. On behalf of Taco Bell and MUI, we all appreciate your efforts and they look forward to investing in the crossroads and being an active member in the Tacoma community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not going to read at you, I just want to make sure I say everything I want to say. My name's Terrell North, I live at 7333 New Hampshire Avenue. And I, one thing, people keep talking about what we want and consensus in our neighborhood. And the thing is, I'm not allowed to join the New Hampshire Gardens Neighborhood Association. I live across the street. There are 380 homes in New Hampshire Gardens, there are about 400 homes where I live, in Tacoma Overlook and, and Hampshire Tower. So when we talk about the consensus of the neighborhood, no one asks me anything about this. You know, I'm not a consultant for MUI, I'm actually a consultant for the Thurgood Marshall College Fund, where I work to help people of color and other, and other low-income families get their kids into college. And I also run an organization, as all of you know, called Man Up here in the city, making a new United People, where since 2009, we've worked with young people from Hampshire Towers and around the city to get them first initially out of gangs. Once that issue kind of subsided, we started focusing our efforts on helping them want to go to college, which is actually how I got the job at Thurgood Marshall. So it's all a virtuous thing. But the thing is, you know, right now, we're trying to create real opportunities for young people in this city. When a 15-year-old kid decides that they need some money, unfortunately, they don't normally think about getting a job that pays $10 an hour. Here, they normally think about selling drugs. I know that because I work with these kids every, every week. And in addition to, in addition to trying to offer, I don't want them to work at Taco Bell for the next 30 years. What I want them to do is get their, get their lives and their minds into the same frame of mind all these homeowners have, that I have, that all of you have, that they go to work every day and they work hard and there's some benefit to it. You know, it's like, I, I'm glad that the people of New Hampshire Gardens care about my neighborhood right now, but they haven't before. All, the only time I've ever heard anything about, from the folks in New Hampshire Gardens is when they want to stop the people in my neighborhood from parking on the public streets in front of their homes. And now that they, we're not allowed to park on the public streets in front of our homes, we now have parking issues, now these same people are saying they don't want our young people to be employed because they don't like Taco Bell. That's great, you don't have to eat there. I may not necessarily eat there, I'm not going to eat there every day, right? But it's an option, it's an option. The only other drive-through I know of in that intersection is the McDonald's. I'm not worried about drive-through options. What I'm worried about is, can we create as a city opportunities for young people? So I've already written a letter to all of you, I'm not going to repeat any of that stuff. But I do think it's important to remember, I don't know what bread and chocolate, what they, how many people they're employing here, I don't know how many people Republic are employing here, but I know that Taco Bell says they want to employ at least 50% of their staff as your constituents. That's why I'm supporting the Taco Bell and I hope that you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth. Regarding Taco Bell, we all like to look good. So do restaurateurs, to customers, to the community, and to each other. In Missouri, the Missouri Restaurant Association wanted to look good because today, they look good this week to each other, when a judge ruled that a minimum wage increase from $7.65 to $11 by 2018 is not allowed under state law. On the other hand, in South Carolina, restaurateurs look good to each other because they were banding together to help their neighbors who've been hit hard by flooding from heavy rains, gave out food to responders and to people who had been hit, who had been damaged. I mean, a- I mean, affected by it. Perhaps we can help Taco Bell look even better, not just to our community, but to each other in the restaurant industry. More than 15 years ago, the National Restaurant Association and founding partner American Express created the Restaurant Neighbor Award to help honor restaurants for outstanding community service and involvement, which is included in this plan. This award highlights the positive contributions restaurants make in their local neighborhoods each and every day, so they would look good to each other and look good to us. At a recent fundraiser for a local homeless shelter, I learned that a property developer was going to donate funds to help build a better shelter with apartments rather than just overnight accommodations. Perhaps the council, if you do decide to go the Taco Bell route, can encourage Yum!, or Taco Bell, to donate funds or work together to create a Taco Bell Recreation Center renovation, taco spelling, T-A-K-O. Scholarship joke. Anyway, scholarship contributions for Taco Bell employees, or what the heck, a Gidget Chipperton dog part. If you don't know who Gidget Chipperton is, that is the... That would be in memory of the late Taco Bell Chihuahua. Or perhaps the effect can be multiple among the fast-food franchises in the area. Encourage Taco Bell to work with other fast-food restaurants, though perhaps through the National Restaurant Association, to initiate construction of the proper crosswalks now to avoid the fatalities. I know you've already been discussing that, but perhaps it could be part of a larger initiative. Also, to support those efforts with outreach to schools regarding proper crossing procedures. In the U.K., they named crosswalks after animals like zebra, puffin, and pelican. Puffin, meaning puffin, if you're wondering, stands for a pedestrian user-friendly intelligent crosswalk. Perhaps schoolchildren could be engaged in naming them with animals, birds, fish, whatever, from their own imaginations. As the Styrofoam Initiative in Tacoma's schools succeeded with peer pressure from students to the adults... I don't know if you call that peer pressure, adult pressure. There's got to be nothing for it. This so, with the children, they could also cut down on the fatalities. Mom, don't cross at the zebra. You have to cross at the puffin. So if you go with Taco Bell, help them help the community prevent the fatalities together. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, we'll move along to general public comments, and that's on any of our work session items or anything not on our agenda.
Greetings, all mayor and city council members and city manager and city clerk. My name is Colleen Dupont, sometimes known as Grandma Colleen, in the neighborhood where I live, near San Marco and family. At 7051 Carroll Avenue and at Tulip, we call it Main Street, in Victory Tower Apartments, housing seniors, including those with disabilities, all hoping to age in place. I would like to plead for our community to be represented, as in this past... Yesterday's festival, street festival. I'd like for our community to be represented, if it's possible, both as property owners, managers, and as tenants, in future plans and participation in street festivals to assure the safety, convenience, and benefits for all. I'm presenting my request in haiku form, a Japanese verse we learned serving many years in Asia, if you'll forgive... I'm trying to narrow this down. Our home on Main Street wants to join festival play, fundraise, and come and go, because we had problems with being blocked in yesterday. We'll home-cook our food, because we have a diverse group of residents there from Africa, South America, all over. We'll home-cook our food, share our art, and tell our stories. Right now, we have... We've had several writing groups forming. We've had some fantastic stories. Dance and sing with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. Melanie Isis here. I wanted to just speak briefly about some events that are going on in the crossroads, which we've been discussing here tonight, that are an effort to try to transform the character of our international commercial area with some other things like the arts, which are a good way to try to give an old place a new face. So one thing that we're doing is, we're doing a large community mural on Holton Lane on the side of the Aldi building with the support of the new property owner, JBGR. And we have a matching grant that we got from the city. And the painting of that mural is going to start this week, every Wednesday and Saturday until Thanksgiving. So I'm going to give you all some of these flyers and encourage you to come over and watch or participate. They're looking for volunteers. The artists, by the way, flyer'd the neighborhood around there, New Hampshire Gardens and Carroll Highland, 1,000 flyers, and we got as many as six people at a community meeting. It is like pulling teeth. We also adopted New Hampshire Avenue from the state highway in 2013, and we do four cleanups a year there. Our next one is November 14th, but it's part of our mission to maintain. And we always have difficulty getting volunteers from the New Hampshire Garden and other community residents. So I'd like to pass out some of these cards to keep us in mind. I know everyone has a lot going on. It's only 90 minutes. Fred Schultz has joined us, other members of the association, but it is always difficult, and it is sort of the main street of those communities, New Hampshire Avenue. We also are doing something very unusual. On November 8th, we're having a festival, an outdoor festival, around the Indian holiday Diwali, which is the celebration of lights. We're doing this with the Hindu temple of Metropolitan Washington and the city, and it is a first for us. We're trying to get people from around the region to come to the crossroads for this event and see it with a new eyes. So I encourage you to come. And last, I'll just mention, we did a direct mailer a couple of weeks ago, targeting old Tacoma and Silver Spring residents. Many of you may have gotten this in the mail. It was specifically to try to contrast what we have at the crossroads with other successful commercial centers. And I hope that some of you will use these coupons, so my businesses can tell me that they got some traction. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Porter, and I live on the 1,000 block of Elm Avenue. And I wanted to note, as the mayor mentioned, that we've got an election, a city election coming up in two weeks. And I appreciate the council's concern about turnout at the elections. I think that's always an issue. During the time that I was on the council and mayor, the primary reason that I found that people didn't turn out for city elections was because they didn't think that the outcome of the election really mattered to them. And to some extent, that's an issue of voter education. I want to note that Terry Siemens used to have meetings, maybe you still do, with people in your ward to talk to them about what the city does and why the election matters to them. I came to one of the meetings you organized and talked about what it was like being mayor and what the mayor did and how the mayor related to people. And I think those kinds of things are very important, and I'd like to see the city do more of that. But the other reason, I think that to a certain extent, people are correct, that the conversation that goes on around city elections really tends not to focus on the kinds of issues that lower-income people and renters in the city are concerned about. And so in an effort to try and address that, Cheer has scheduled three candidates forums for the residents of wards four, five, and six. And I will say, these forums, which have been organized by Cheer Housing Director Vanita Myers, are really focused on bringing the candidates into the places where residents normally gather, but also they're focused on bringing out issues that the residents of those wards have said via a survey that Cheer is conducting are really the most important issues to them. Issues like affordable housing, like landlord-tenant issues, like public safety, and like the quality of city services. And I just want to let people know, and the council know, and I know a number of you have already agreed that you're coming, the Ward Four Forum is tomorrow, October 20th, at the Park Ritchie Apartments. It starts at 7:00 p.m., and it is cosponsored by the Park Ritchie Tenants Association. The Ward Five Forum is October 22nd at the Essex House Apartments, and it is cosponsored by the Essex House Tenants Association. The Ward Six Forum is at the Tacoma Park Rec Center at 7315 New Hampshire Avenue, and it is cosponsored by the New Hampshire Garden Civic Association. And I am very pleased that both mayoral candidates and the ward candidates from those wards have agreed to be there. Thank you all very much.
And what's the date on that last one?
The last one is October 27th.
And Kathy?
Yes.
I'm sorry to say, I misunderstood that those forums, I guess, are open to all city council candidates, and I misunderstood that, so I have a board meeting scheduled for Thursday, and I'm not going to be able to make that one.
Okay, yes. We are focusing on the candidates from that ward. So if you're able to come, the Ward Four Forum is tomorrow.
Okay, good.
So that would be the one... Of course, anyone is welcome to come to any of the forums, but I believe that the people who will be asked questions and who will get a chance to talk to the people who are there will be the candidate, the ward candidate from that ward.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thanks very much. Other comments?
Howdy. I'm still Terrell North. I still live at 7333 New Hampshire Avenue. I'm not going to take up the entire three minutes this time. I actually just want to thank all of you, because I've got an opportunity to speak with some folks from Hillwood Manor down the street from me. And there's a level of self-determination going on with the people in that community right now, in those homes, and their work to try to... Well, not try, but their work to get a new owner for their building. They've been very proactive in a way that a lot of, oftentimes, renters in this city aren't, right? Low-income communities in this city aren't. So I want to thank all of you for the support that you've been giving to those folks and the support that you've attempted to give to the folks at Hampshire Towers, just because at the end of the day, oftentimes, hard-hit communities need real assistance. And I think that it's not... People don't always thank you, right? Because they're actually doing the... They have to work every day, and they're trying to maintain their home, and they're trying to deal with their children. I mean, I personally have gotten to the point where I primarily focus on working with young people, because the adults just drive me crazy, right? But these are folks that are proactively working to improve the condition that they're living in, to create, to preserve affordable housing. And if it had been done sooner in some other parts of the same community, then there might be some different, healthier outcomes going on for that community and the fight that they're having. So I just want to thank you for that work and hope that you are supportive of any other community that's working to try to get nonprofit developers to come in and preserve their affordability and their ability to call this place home, because after all, that's the reason why we all came here, because it's a beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name's Tara Blaze. I've had the pleasure of meeting a couple of you face-to-face and sometimes over the phone a little bit in this process. So Chad and I are... The candidates trying to win a license through the application process with the state of Maryland to open a medical marijuana dispensary in Tacoma Park. We've looked at a couple of different locations. We've most recently made a little bit more progress in the Tacoma Station area than in some of the other real estate locations we've considered. But I just wanted to introduce myself and thank you for going over the public concerns about safety and maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood and keeping our kids safe. Chad and I have two small children, one in preschool and one in first grade at Tacoma Park Elementary School, and we'll be here throughout the school system. And we want to keep what's working well right now in Tacoma Park as well. And we want to make sure that that's protected and safe for our children as they go through the school system. So I just wanted to make sure that you had a face to the name and that you knew that I was available to answer questions, to share in discussions, and offer opinions where they're asked for. Okay? Thanks. I won't take up the whole time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments? Okay, seeing that, we'll go to council comments. And I'm not seeing any lights right away, so I'll go first. Two things I wanted to do. One is to let folks know that Councilmember Schultz and I and the Sustainability Coordinator, Gina McNeil... Gina Mathias, I always want to say Gina McNeil, were at the Council of Government's board meeting last Wednesday, and the city was the recipient of one of the awards for energy leadership. There were awards to a large city, or a large government and a smaller government. Frederick County got the award for the large government, and Tacoma Park got the award for the smaller government. This is a very nice bowl award that we got. It's an original piece of glass created by an artist, and it recognizes the city's efforts on leadership in energy and sustainability. So I don't know if Councilmember Schultz wants to add any comments.
This was a very dignified ceremony, and I was kind of thrilled to be part of it, having not done a darn thing to justify it, because the great deal of work has been done by all of us up here on the council and our predecessors, as well as our sustainability manager, Gina Mathias, who I think deserves the greatest credit for all of this. But because I sit on that committee, I got to wear my good suit, get my picture taken. This is a hand-built glass vase, and it's one-of-a-kind. Or actually, there was four of them.
Four.
So we are thinking we need to have a trophy case for this and for other things, plaques and stuff, that we have gained over the years.
And we have a number of items, and this is one of the... Let me just say, one of the nicer-looking ones.
Yeah.
So I'll pass that down if anybody wants to see it.
Oh, great.
Yeah, don't drop.
Yeah, please.
Because there are only four of those bowls, and the other three have already been hauled back to their... To the award winners. And the other thing I wanted to do was just note that the city manager and I attended a meeting in Rockville today with the county executive, Mr. Leggett, and a number of his staff and a number of other elected officials, including councilmembers Elrich and Hucker and Senator Raskin, Delegate Moon, Delegate Smith. And this was a meeting that was called by the Hampshire Tower residents, and they worked with Casa de Maryland and put this meeting together, and it was an hour-long meeting with the county executive. And they presented their case for some things that they wanted. The county executive was very helpful and very informative in advising them about what what they wanted. The county executive was very helpful and very informative in advising them about what the county could do to help them with their situation with the rent increases at their building. And our understanding is, from the Director of the Housing and Community Affairs Department at the county, Clarence Snuggs, that an agreement with Orla, the developers, and the owners of the building, has been signed with the county, and the county will be providing an amount of money directly to help write down the rent increases for the tenants over a three-year period. And it was very helpful to have the tenant representative there, and to have that dialogue with the county, and there was a very good back-and-forth, and some excellent information imparted. I don't know if the city manager wants to add anything about that.
No, I think it's.
Councilmember Schultz, did you have another comment?
Yeah, just a couple of things. In, in response to Terrell North's comments just a minute, a minute ago, it's very, about, about affordable housing, it's interesting that in Ward Six, there are three major housing facilities. One is Hampshire Towers, which is comprised of affordable housing, that has undergone somewhat of a catharsis in terms of getting the building sold to a property owner who's put in, bought it for like $20 million, and put in some more millions to, to bring it up to a quality that it had not seen, since it was probably even better now than it was the day it was built. But also, with regard to the matter that Mayor Williams was just talking about, and the difficulties surrounding rent increases, so that people won't be displaced, hopefully. Second is that the property that Mr. North mentioned, Hampshire, the Hillwood Manor Apartments, property that was built in the early '40s, has never been renovated, is now in the process of, been under contract to Montgomery Housing Partnership, who intends to buy it and to begin to make repairs on it over a period of, of years. This is really a significant thing. And then, the other building that is now known as Tacoma Overlook Condominium is in the middle of a heavy-duty lawsuit against the former owner of the building, who bought the building and renovated it and converted it into condominiums. But, from what I understand, did a rather poor job of maintaining the building, and depleted the funds such there was almost nothing but nominal reserve funds for the tenant, for the condo owner association. So, there is a very large multimillion-dollar lawsuit in the courts in Montgomery County that is creating a, a very great deal of difficulty for the unit owners in that building. And so, these three buildings are all practically within shouting distance of each other. They represent something close to 500 dwelling units, probably, in total over, between 500 and 600 dwelling units. And it's just, it's an interesting situation, and what people should be aware of, of that, and it's kept a lot of people busy. Onto other things, the, on, on the rolling agenda, there had been a tension going to be paid by the city council to amending the city's noise ordinance. That, because of the press of so many other things on this particular city council's schedule between now and the conclusion of its work in November, has been pushed back so that the new city council gets seated in November, will be able to take it up. So, that's why it's not on the current rolling agenda. So, I know that people in my ward have been very anxious about that, particularly in New Hampshire Gardens and some other areas, and, and also elsewhere in the city, I might mention. And then, the, I would like to bring to the attention of the city manager of that the web, with regard to early voting, I've already mentioned this to you, there's plans to have early voting at some locations outside of the community center, but the website, as of yesterday, didn't have that information.
I think it's been updated. It's all, it's all up to date now.
Can, can, do you have that information up here right now, to tell us where that is?
I don't, but I think Deputy City Manager will have it in a moment. But yes, it's, that is one thing I wanted to identify, that the, the website's now in a situation where it's easy to get to the information, it's prominently on the front page, as well as links and a map.
All right, well, that's good enough. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Anybody want to say anything about the street festival yesterday?
It was great, I was there.
Okay.
Laura Barclay did an excellent job.
Anything?
Great turnout.
Okay.
Not enough spotapots.
Wish there were more bands.
There would be if it hadn't been postponed. City managers' comments?
I just have a couple, and I do want to follow up on the, the street festival. We will be working with the folks at Victory Tower. Apparently, they were blocked in again on part of the time yesterday at the festival. I don't think that was the plan.
I, I have had conversations in the last couple of months, and that's elapsed, and that's regrettable.
Yeah. I knew that they'd had it as well. Nevertheless, it was a problem yesterday, and so, it's something we will work on and insist that not happen. I was going to mention that the election information is now clearly posted on the city's website. There's some WSSC work that is starting today and will continue through the week in Ward Three, kind of in the southern corner, where some work had been, where the water mains were replaced. Speed humps are being installed today and tomorrow. The road markings, such as stop bars and crosswalks, are scheduled to be installed Wednesday and Thursday, so that's something that's going on. I also just wanted to mention that I'm continuing to evaluate how to handle some council member concerns about the 72-hour parking rule. We're looking at a, some kind of a placard that somebody could use when they know that they will be parking somewhere for more than 72 hours, and I think I should have something within a day or two for that. I will say that I'm, I'm not proposing at this point to waive, to kind of suspend that 72-hour rule. It is an important concept to maintain parking is open to the public, and to keep cars moving around. And it's also important for us to identify when we have abandoned vehicles, and, and manage to be able to have a technique and a mechanism for dealing with those.
Absolutely.
So, I'm continuing to work on that, and hopefully, we'll have something to show you very shortly. That's all.
Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Mail?
I mean, just, just quickly to observe on the election, part of the city website, the link to early voting is now on the homepage, and you can get to it another way, by taking the five separate links. But knowing that we're making a redesign, my, my overall comment is just that it looks like we're moving way toward people who just have mobile devices, in the sense that there's only, like, two sentences on a page, and then you click on one of the sentences, and it takes you to another page. But then, the very last thing is that you have to open a PDF to see the locations. So, if you're on a mobile device, that's a barrier as opposed to an opportunity.
Thanks very much.
The table was uploaded as a PDF because we were having issues earlier today with the web-based table, and we wanted to make sure that the information was there, even if it was a PDF, but that's being addressed.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any minutes to adopt, so we will go to our special session voting item. This is the resolution commenting on site plan for the Northeast Quadrant of New Hampshire Avenue and Holton Lane, Taco Bell. Did?
Mayor, I would, I would just like to make one comment on this. We did not get this into the draft that's before you, but in the very first whereas clause on the draft resolution, it had read Taco Bell, the applicant, and it should read Moy Brands LLC, the applicant. So, we would replace where it says Taco Bell with Moy Brands LLC, and then perhaps in the last part of that same whereas clause, to be used for a quick-service restaurant, and then in comma, Taco Bell with a drive-through, just so that it's clear.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Councilmember Mail, is that an old light?
No.
Okay. So, we have had some presentations on this, we have had a work session discussion on this, and we have a proposed resolution. Did you want to go over any of the, any additions to the resolution since the draft that we saw earlier?
Okay, I guess the, the first thing I'll mention is that council asked for some clarification from the Montgomery County Planning Department. We did receive a letter from Glenn Wright. Not sure it's real helpful. I think that it basically says that they will continue to look at it, and they did respond, but it, I don't think it gives clear direction to the, to the council through this. We did incorporate the various comments that were made by the council at the previous council meetings. There were a couple times when we had to blend a couple comments so that it, it worked in here, as we're identifying that on page two, the top, the underlined section is new that the property, whereas the property is zoned commercial residential town CRT, a mixed-use zoning designation with maximum floor area ratio FAR of 2.5, and as permitted under the CRT standard method of development, the applicant has proposed a single-use building with a stated maximum FAR of 0.08 based on the net lot area.
So, the applicant actually stated the 0.08, because all I saw was a summary that said approximately .1?
Is this a computation by city staff, or was this a statement by the applicant?
I'll stay that one moment. Mr. Asper?
Yes, that was a computation by city staff, based on the net lot area and the area of the building.
Does Moy Brands accept that computation of 0.08? My, my, what I'm getting is, my preference is to include something that is accepted by Moy Brands. It, it's not firmly held, however.
The only thing I would add is, what's on the site plan, I just asked the engineer what's on the site plan, is .1, just so it's, provides representation of what's there.
Surrounding.
So, it's, .1 is what's on the application, is that correct?
Yeah. Well, this does say stated, so, stated maximum FAR, so perhaps we change that to .1, 0.1, is that?
If, if you could retain the word stated, then it should be .1. If you, if you have stated, it could be 0.08.
I defer to your preference.
Do you got any judgment?
Stick with .1 if it's stated, that's fine.
Okay, so stated of 0.1.
So, that's deleting the word maximum?
No, delete.
No, just saying with a stated maximum FAR of 0.1, because that's stated, as opposed to necessarily something else. At the bottom of page two, there was a, a new whereas clause. The applicant provided a need study for a Taco Bell restaurant with a drive-through performed by Thomas Point Associates, which identified nine quick-service restaurants with drive-through uses within the four-minute drive-time radius of the proposed Taco Bell as generated by the Nielsen Company, and whereas city staff identified two additional quick-serve restaurants with active drive-through uses, total of 11, within the four-minute driving radius of the proposed Taco Bell, based on the need study provided by the applicant. And whereas the city acknowledges the concerns of many residents that a drive-through restaurant does not match the smart-growth vision of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sector Plan and the New Ave principles. And then, in the resolved clauses, we changed the first, I think, if you don't mind, maybe I should just go ahead and read the entire set of resolved clauses.
Okay.
Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Tacoma Park recommends approval of the proposed site plan, recognizing that the site plan operates as an interim use, provides community amenities and pedestrian improvements, and includes a drive-through that adheres to design standards set forth in the Montgomery County zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Tacoma Park requests the Montgomery County Planning Board to clarify the text of Section 7.3.4.E.3 of the Montgomery County zoning ordinance, to include objective measures for making a finding that a need exists for a restaurant with a drive-through accessory use in advance of future site plan application submissions, with special consideration for historic districts and transit-oriented master plan and sector plan areas like Tacoma Langley Crossroads. Be it further resolved that the city council requests the, the planning board's careful consideration of the need for the drive-through at this location, given that the community is currently served by 11 quick-serve restaurants with drive-throughs within a four-minute drive time of the site. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Tacoma Park requests the planning board's careful consideration of whether a project with a maximum proposed FAR, I guess, of .1, on a proposed property zone CRT 2.5 is in substantial conformance with a sector plan that prioritizes smart growth and transit-oriented development. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Tacoma Park requests a written commitment from Taco Bell to manage litter on the site with new receptacles, maintain the trees and landscaping on the site year-round, hire and train local youth in cooperation with Man Up and similar programs, actively participate in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, and continue to work with the community.
Should that last result be addressed to Taco Bell or to Moy Companies?
The operator. Taco Bell and Moy Companies, the operator, may perhaps.
I think it'd be those, Moy Companies, I mean, they're the ones, the franchise.
Maybe Taco Bell.
That's fine, we'll put, we'll put Moy.
Can you just explain the further resolve clause just above that? Why do we need that one?
I simply added the ones that were requested by council, and if there are some of these that you choose not to include, that's fine, but this reflects the, it corresponds with the whereas that was added earlier in the document.
Okay, what I'd like to do at this point is see if somebody would like to move this, and then, once it's on the table, if there are requests to change anything, or delete, or add, we can take those up in turn.
I'm moving.
And I'd like you to move it with these minor corrections.
That's the understanding, is moving with the corrections that we have noted in going through to this point. Move by Councilmember Schultz, is her second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Siemens, okay. Council discussion? Seeing none?
All right.
Councilmember Grant?
Thank you. So, as probably everyone here knows, except for a few people who came for things, there were other matters, I see maybe one or two in the room. I oppose the drive-through. I don't have any opinion on Taco Bell as a restaurant, but my concern relates to transit-oriented development and best uses of this particular site. I certainly do recognize points that are captured in the ordinance before us that have been raised by individuals here tonight, especially Terrell North, about the creation of development that will bring jobs to the community, jobs especially that are well-suited for youth employment, people who are getting started on their work lives. We've had a lot of, as the mayor noted, we've had a number of sessions, we've had a lot of public comment, both at a variety of council meetings, via petitions and by email. My own tally, which I updated slightly, and I'm sure it's not completely correct, my own tally of four opinions was eight given directly and 14 by petition of the against positions, 33 against directly, either via email or at a council meeting, and then 75 or so via, via petition. Many of the petition signatures there are going to be duplicate of, of the opinions sent in by email. It's clear that the community is divided on the fore side, I note that an organization is represented, which adds weight on the fore side. The council is also divided, it'll become clearer as we go along in the next few minutes, to what extent. I prefer, where possible, myself, to find consensus. Consensus doesn't mean surrendering one's opinions, however. My proposal, and-- My proposal, and this is a movement to amend, my proposal is that the final resolved clause, sorry, not the final one, the first resolved clause be amended. Instead of that the City of Tacoma Park, City Council of the City of Tacoma Park recommends approval of proposed site plan, my motion to amend is that the City Council of the City of Tacoma Park takes no position on approval of the proposed site plan. This recognizes that there are arguments both for and against approval of the Taco Bell site plan. It recognizes that there are divisions based on well-founded arguments and positions in the community. And to me, it is a fair compromise. As has been noted all along, the city is not compelled to take any position of the possibilities that have been laid before us since we started this discussion months ago, our approval, approval with conditions, rejection, and then not taking a position. We can, and I would advocate by this motion to amend, take no position on the site plan itself and simply use our resolution as a mechanism for conveying our facts that we consider to be germane about the site plan application and the elements of the positions in the community. So, I put that motion on the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Council discussion of the proposed amendment. Councilmember Schultz.
I would not favor the proposed amendment, simply because we have spent four to five weeks since the first work session composing this resolution with all the whereases and testimony from so many people, written testimony, oral testimony, here to really come up with something that we've tried to fine-tune this, to take into account as many of the aspects of this thing that's conceivable, I think, to take into account. To do all that, and then to say that we're not taking a position on it, seems like we've just wasted the last five weeks of our discussion. And I think we owe it to the Planning Board and to the residents that we take a position and we stand by it, whether everybody agrees with that position or not.
If I can just ask the city manager if you have an opinion on whether taking no position, whether kind of having this whole resolution laid out with all the whereases and the therefor's and the information, whether that is something that you convey with a resolution of no position or whether no position is just we have no position?
You can do it either way. We have certainly in the past sent resolutions with no position.
We do have four requests. We do have four requests in the remaining resolved clauses, and those, to me at least, are proper for resolved clauses. We are back to...
Right, I'm just trying to make sure that...
Yes, we have sometimes just not weighed in. There have been a number of cases where there's been a resolution as a city council taking no position.
But can I just ask a point of clarification on that? If we take... what does that mean for then the resolve clauses moving forward and how the Planning Board is going to look at the resolve clauses if we take no position in the first one?
Basically, it would be as they would deal with any other city council resolution, which is, I assume, taking it seriously. They would assume that there's... the decision on the Taco Bell with the drive-through is up to them without an input, one way or the other, from the Tacoma Park City Council. And presumably, they would respond to those items in the other resolve clauses that affect them.
This is, just to clarify, this is recommend without condition, approval without condition, right?
The original, the original one.
The language we have right now?
That's correct.
So, regardless of whether they address our other concerns in here, it still will recommend to approve. If we said recommend with condition and we described conditions A, B, and C, and they did not address A, B, and C, then it would take a supermajority in some circumstances.
That's correct.
This is, although we have lots of text to accompany this, none of that text matters with regard to a supermajority voting for...
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other comments? I'll say that I was prepared to vote in favor of the resolution as it was written. With the amendment to take no position, I take Councilmember Mail's point that he just made about the way it was written, having basically, this was kind of advisory resolve clauses, and I think there's still advisory resolve clauses. Whichever way we do it, I guess I could go to no position. Any other comments? Councilmember Siemens?
I'm happy with the resolution as we presented it and I signed it tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
I'd just like to say that I support the original resolution. I don't think we should make any changes and move forward.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. So, I agree with Councilmember Siemens and Councilmember Smith that we should move forward with the original resolution. And I just want to take this moment to thank everyone who has participated in this conversation. I think as one resident emailed earlier today, this was a complicated issue with many moving pieces. And as I think about this issue and the conversation we have, there's many factors. There's redevelopment, there's affordability, there's access to opportunity, there's implementing a vision that, I think that's something that we all agree with, is the vision, but there's also taking advantage of short-term opportunities. And what I see in this project and moving forward will do is not take a giant leap step forward in our vision. You know, we'll have that at certain times with the Transit Center opening and as we prepare for the Purple Line. But I do see this as a baby step, a baby step to improve a very problematic area that, as we've heard, has some issues with litter and other problems with loitering. And in terms of the amendment that was moved forward by Councilmember Grimes, I would say that what the city manager just said actually helped me think this through, which is, I actually want to send a message to the Planning Board that we are taking a position, that when we are thinking about development issues in our community, we are going to very seriously take positions about what happens. And that's the message I want to send to the Planning Board. So, I'd like to have the resolution as it is now.
I mean, I just want to ask though, what's the position? I think the position that we're telling the county is that we approve without condition. That's the message that we're sending. We approve of a single-story drive-through restaurant without condition. Okay.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, which is to amend to take no position. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so the amendment fails two to five. Okay, we have the resolution as introduced. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
That resolution as proposed passes five to two. And we will now go to our work session discussion of the RCN cable franchise agreement.
All right. Hopefully, you've all read the stack of papers that I provided related to the resolution, the discussion of a resolution to issue a, provide testimony on a public hearing before the Montgomery County, well, a hearing examiner for Montgomery County related to the Star Power or RCN cable franchise. Montgomery County has been negotiating with both Comcast and RCN. It now has two draft agreements with the two entities. Tacoma Park is, I believe, maybe the only municipality that actually has RCN customers in Montgomery County.
I'm one of them.
So, this is likely to be a public hearing on which a number of other municipalities do not weigh in. Nevertheless, the proposal that is in the franchise agreement and settlement agreement is a very strong proposal. It's very good for Tacoma Park, although the actual amount of the monies are relatively small because it's based on numbers of subscribers. Some of the things that we would get out of this RCN agreement is that RCN would work with us to have a, add a channel to its lineup in Gaithersburg so the people in Gaithersburg can watch our station, that we will be, the City of Tacoma Park will be provided free cable modem service and equipment at four locations and a fiber connection from the Tacoma Park City Hall to the RCN's IP network. We're allowed, we are able to connect our various facilities, like New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center and Public Works, with some stronger capacity, which we've needed for a long time. And they've already started working with us on that.
Have we identified the four locations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, we'll be getting a free metro Ethernet connection at a minimum of 20 Mbps symmetrical. Thank goodness I don't have to interpret all of these things.
Except that for download, that's pretty slow.
The...
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
For upload, it's...
Right. We have, we're putting together a variety, a combination of these various fiber improvements, and this is one of several. One of the things that I like about this proposal is that our channel would be in both at standard definition and high definition, unlike the difficulty with Verizon and Comcast on ensuring that we have both standard and high definition for our channel throughout the city. RCN will be providing that right up front. They will also be converting PEG channels into Internet Protocol Television to be able to distribute the channels to some agencies. And so, there's some nice end schools. And so, there's some nice ways that we can get some things to some other facilities at lower cost to them. We are also able to use the PEG grant for either capital or non-capital support of, for PEG purposes with the city. It is a good agreement. In the draft resolution that we have for October 29th, we would be reiterating, I recommend, some points that we made in our public hearing statements to, related to the Comcast franchise agreement, things such as municipalities should have a seat on the PEG governance board, and that Montgomery County should move quickly to finalize its memorandum of understanding with the municipalities. They are moving better than they had been, but I think it's good to just keep that same pressure on that says that the agreement that the county has with the municipalities be settled quickly. So, that we're able to actually take some votes on the franchise agreements themselves. Both Comcast and RCN, at some point, will come back to you for an ordinance adopting it, adopting the franchise agreement with each one. So, I can answer some of your questions, but I just wanted to let you know that I think that this is a good agreement. It does have a number of kind of non-financial benefits for us that will be very helpful and some financial benefits, so.
Now, regarding the grant, do we have to get the okay from RCN to use it for capital and non-capital, or they just give us the money and we can apply it any way we want?
Under this, it would just come to us. It comes through the county a certain percentage, but that money then we could use for either capital or non-capital PEG-related expenses.
Okay, so there's no approvals involved?
No, we don't have to go through any special steps.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Mail?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to describe, I guess, and I won't pretend that this is an exhaustive, based on exhaustive knowledge of the issue of cable franchise fees, because it's a complicated subject for which we have special legal representation. And I know the city manager has developed extensive expertise on this issue over many years. My general, my general feeling is that the whole structure of local access television is something that will disappear over time. And that our programming, while of really high quality, serves very few people. My understanding of federal law is that, and limited again, I'll caveat that again, is that I think that the maximum of municipality or other entity granting a franchise is allowed to charge is 7%, 7% or 9%. I think this agreement gets us 3%. And that, and at least I did not see when I read the federal law, that the cable companies were allowed to or had the authority to limit the franchise fee to be used only for TV purposes. The law does not, is not, is blind to how the money is be used so that that can be negotiated, of course. And my preference would be, over time, CS move toward agreements with cable franchises, to the extent that they continue to exist, that allow us to use the money, to put the money into the general fund. And to move toward a city TV department that, over time, gets smaller and focuses on, really on broadcasting city council and fewer other things. That doesn't mean that it can't still provide programming and broadcast using the Internet, for example. But I just, I don't see the value for the size of our city department, for the size of the staffing, the growth of that department over time. And so, for me, this agreement would lock us into an arrangement that, at least to my ability to analyze the background, does not get us a particularly generous amount of funding, limits that funding to use for purposes that benefit the cable operator at some level, and don't serve what is a long-term interest of trying to help more constituents, so.
The federal requirements are that, that these funds do have to go towards, franchise fees go to the general fund, and that will continue. The other related PEG fees do need to be used for PEG funds. However, with the settlement agreements with these, as opposed to what's in the franchise agreement, Montgomery County, operating as our negotiator, was able to negotiate flexibility with those funds. So, and that comes out of, again, it comes out of the settlement agreement because they don't want to set that as a precedent for franchise agreements elsewhere across the country. So, I'm happy to follow up with the detail on that for you, but this is actually more generous to allow flexibility than we would have if we went a different direction.
But in exchange for a lower amount of money overall, because the county is keeping more money as opposed to, at least that's what we heard when we were talking with our legal representation in closed-cap session.
Yes, that's not related to the RCN one.
That's for Verizon?
Yes. Verizon and Comcast. Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Thank you for this. I had two questions. I don't know if it's appropriate for the RCN, but I know when we've discussed other cable franchise agreements, we talked about possibly having the city's legal fees paid for, as well as putting in something about having the wires removed.
Yes. And I, the, I left the item in about the, in the draft resolution about paying the legal fees. That's a relatively small amount related to RCN. The, I can put the wires in. They've been much better than Comcast and Verizon have been, but I don't mind having that as part of our testimony.
Thank you.
So, do you need any direction from us to put that in there?
No, just put it in.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Schultz?
Couple of questions and then a comment. What percentage of the households does RCN supply in our city? Do you have, as relative to Comcast and Verizon?
I need to, I need to double-check. I need to, I need to double check and try to get you an answer for that. There, I will say that they're very circumspect. I think they don't want that kind of information made public, so I will give you a sense of it when I look back through my records. My understanding is that Verizon has the bulk of cable survivor, subscribers. Then I think RCN and then Comcast, but I'm not sure.
Well, all right. Well, then that's a good lead into my next question, and which is, to what extent since this one is being signed and put away first ahead of the other two major suppliers, will this in any way work in our favor to influence agreements with the other two companies?
It doesn't do a whole lot because they're not a big player in this region. We certainly, actually, we wanted to make sure frankly that the RCN franchise agreement was essentially negotiated first, which it was, because we did not, because we knew we wouldn't get it quite as generous of a agreement with Comcast. So, even though it's, it's, you saw the Comcast agreement earlier, the RCN one was essentially negotiated first.
Okay.
And the, and the Verizon one isn't up now?
Isn't, isn't about six years from now.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lovell, for answering Councilmember Mail's points about the usages of the money. I do agree with his attitude, however, that I would prefer that the city spend as little on city TV going forward as the city has to spend on city TV going forward, because I, I see that for the size of city we are, that the benefit delivered by city TV is just, it's, seems hard to justify, given the cost, so that if the money could go to other priorities within the city, that's what I would prefer. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just have to register the, the fact that I support city TV. I don't think that we put enough resources in them. I mean, they have been very helpful for getting the word out that's going on in Ward Five, whether that is community meetings, covering the lunch and learn, Parents Night. I mean, I, I think it's fantastic department. As much television as people watch, I mean, how else would we, we, we get our word out? I mean, at least for council members, I think it's, it's, it's a fantastic vehicle for us. Thank you.
I'll add my support for expenditures on city TV. I think they do a great job of making available video of a lot of events, a lot of things that the council has nothing to do with, but that enhances the image of our community for a much bigger audience than those people who just live in the city. Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Mail's suggestion. It's, it's kind of the first I've heard such a proposal, and, and right now, I certainly am, have to say I would agree with Mayor Williams and Councilmember Smith, that I see a great benefit to the coverage that's done by our city cable TV. But I know that Councilmember Mail makes this with, with good reasons, and I'll look into further, understand where he's coming from on that. But at this point, I certainly support the continued operation of cable TV.
Okay. So, we have a draft that is going to come back.
The draft resolution will come on October 29th. This is just a chance...
Which, which will be our next meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Any further questions on this item? Okay. We'll take a short break and come back for our final item, which is discussion of medical marijuana dispensaries. For our last item this evening, and that is a work session discussion of medical marijuana dispensaries, and I see Ms. Grigsby.
Hi.
So, take it away.
Okay. Roz Grigsby, Community Development Manager in the Housing and Community Development Department. I was just going to give a very brief overview, and then we're hoping to get direction from council on how you'd like to proceed with the, with whatever questions you might have about the, the topic. As you know, the regulations were approved in Maryland in September for medical cannabis. The code set up the Maryland Medical Cannabis Commission, and it gives very specific requirements for grow facilities, processing facilities, and dispensaries. Any entity who's seeking a license, and the applications are due November 6th, would be required to meet all local zoning and planning requirements. The state has been fairly clear that that's really the only place for local government to weigh in on this legislation. And there are two dispensaries that will be licensed per legislative district. That's District 20 in the state of Maryland. So just to remind everybody how large that is, and, and what ground it covers. The code is very specific about regulations regarding dispensaries. I've listed a number of things here. In addition to this, it includes language that dispensaries will not deviate from the character of the streetscape in a commercial corridor. Consumption is not allowed on the premises. The staff is drug tested. There's a limit of four ounces per customer. The doctors or physicians would all be registered. Patients are all registered. The dispensaries may have a physician, pharmacist, or nurse practitioner on site. I don't want to read you the slides, but I know you had the code provided for you in your packet, so you have a sense of the detail that, that the code goes into. It even includes essentially a vault where the product would be stored when the dispensary is closed to the public. There are public zones and like a waiting room, and beyond that, only people with a prescription from a registered physician would be allowed to enter into the other part of the facility. If council wants to take some kind of action about where you would like dispensaries to locate, or what you would like this potential change in town to look like, there are a few options available to you. As you know, Montgomery County has the zoning and planning authority that, that includes Tacoma Park. You could request a zoning change. Currently, Montgomery County is viewing medical, medical cannabis dispensaries as retail. That means it could go into any commercially zoned area, anywhere in the county that would meet the requirements for retail. A zoning text amendment could be instituted that would put particular requirements in place. It might include distance from a school, or it might include distance from another dispensary, or it might include particular characteristics that city council or county council find desirable. There was some conversation about if that legislation could be expedited. I talked with the Montgomery County Legal, Montgomery Planning Legal Council, Jeffrey Zients, and he said it would, there is nothing about a zoning change that would reach the level of urgency that would circumvent the typical public process. So the 30 days between advertising and a public hearing is required for any kind of zoning change. A second option that the council has available would be to enter into a community impact agreement with any licensee. And so, and if the council wanted to provide support for a particular project and ask that the licensee participate in the city in ways that the council deems important and valuable, that's an option. I listed a couple possibilities that came to mind that the council might value, like participating in the community safety camera program, so that the video footage they have would be available to police in the event that an incident happened and the police wanted to look at it. Participating in the sustainability initiatives of the city, their ongoing involvement... Participating in the sustainability initiatives of the city, their ongoing involvement in local business organization, those kinds of things. I also included a map of the commercial districts and the proximity to schools. We did a 750-foot buffer to give you an idea of what that might look like. We included K through 12 schools, public and private. Number one, Carroll Highlands is in Prince George's. A 750-foot buffer would extend into the New Hampshire Avenue Commercial Corridor. Number two is the Don Bosco School, which would impact the Ethan Allen, New Hampshire Avenue intersection. Number three is John Nevins. Four is Piney Branch. Five and six are the Adventist Schools up near the intersection of Carroll and University. And then seven and eight, of course, are Tacoma Elementary and Tacoma Middle. Even at the 1,000-foot buffer, the Old Town Tacoma Junction area doesn't seem to be impacted.
Is there a quick question? The Montessori School at the Junction?
The Montessori School at the Junction is not included in this for two reasons. We included K through 12 schools. It's very uncommon for children, preschool-aged children, to be unaccompanied by adults. And so the involvement of them, which I think is the concern for school-aged kids, is perhaps not significant. And they aren't open. And since there isn't actually a school functioning there now, a zoning change, if it were in effect today, would only look at other, at schools that are open today. Obviously, that may change.
Do you want to explain the Maple Avenue neighborhood?
Yes. The apartment buildings on Maple Avenue are in red here on this map. That's because there's, they are zoned residential, but there's actually an overlay zone called, actually, the name changed. It's something like the, it was the neighborhood retail overlay zone. It's now something like a community overlay, community retail.
I don't remember, but it does allow for some retail use within the buildings.
Mm-hmm. It's unlikely that a dispensary could meet the requirements of that. That tends to be oriented towards serving the needs of the residents in those buildings. It's sort of a hyper-local focus. Businesses that come under that currently are things like a barber shop, a beauty salon. Those are the only two that come to mind.
There's some convenience stores.
There's a convenience store.
I have a question, and I understand that the owners or operators of the dispensary in the District of Columbia are here. And I wonder if you could share with us, there are concerns about zoning being the avenue to potentially deal with this, and I was wondering what the District of Columbia does in terms of zoning. And the second question is, blanking on the second question. Answer the first question, I'll remember the second question.
My name is Rabbi Jeff Khan, and my family and I own and operate Tacoma, on the center, just on the other side of the state line. I guess, to the best of my ability, the way I would answer the question is to say that a dispensary can be located basically in any retail area in DC. There can be two in any ward, but a maximum of two. There are only five in the district. ANC's are given great weight, so the community worked very closely with us. We met many times with our local ANC in Tacoma DC. They eventually voted to support our application, but we had many community meetings, and they're also part of, I guess, our renewal process, much like, I think, a liquor store or a bar. It works that we'll have to, after three years, placard, and there'll be a general public meeting, and people will be able to comment on how we've done, and if there have been any issues. So there's a lot more community participation than actually the state of Maryland has really put into this law, which is why I think different communities are kind of grappling with it now.
Right, but in terms of the zoning, it sounds like the District of Columbia's approach is the same as the current Montgomery County approach, which is within a retail zone.
I believe so. Not within, we're also not within so many feet of a residentially zoned area, too. So if you think of where we are, in the shared parking lot with S&amp;S Liquor on the other side of the metro station, then across from us is a park, and across is more residential area, a retail area, and behind us are the train tracks, so we don't butt us up on any residential.
And I remember the second piece, which was, a number of people have said, "Oh, but there's this one immediately adjacent in the District of Columbia." And my sense was that there are restrictions about how, what is dispensed can move across state lines, or who can access your location.
Right. So, at this point, and the future's not always foreseeable when it comes to this, but so far, there, it is not possible to take medicine across any state line. There are states that have reciprocal arrangements, where they accept cards from other states, but DC does not, and Maryland does not intend to in its program, so there really wouldn't be.
So the proximity isn't really pertinent here, because supposedly, there's supposed to be that wall?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes, sir. Can I ask you a question?
Sir?
Yeah. This is, this question's born out of utter naivete on my part, okay? Which means I really don't know much about anything on this subject. But you're one of five dispensaries right now in the District of Columbia. How close is the next closest one to you, roughly? A matter of miles?
Definitely. They're, the next closest ones would be in Dupont Circle or way downtown.
Okay. Is it, is this, is your dispensary, this is the one and only thing that your business does, or do you? Okay, and, and I don't want to pry, because this is proprietary information. It's your private business, and that should remain that way. But I'm curious as to, what is, I mean, the only people that can shop in your, are people who come in with medical prescriptions. Is that correct?
Well, actually, it's not a prescription, but the way, and the way that it'll work in Maryland as well is that a doctor has to write a recommendation, and the Department of Health has to approve it.
I see.
So it's not the same as a doctor's prescription. But there are people who are registered with the state, whose doctors have made this recommendation.
But presumably, there's enough volume of people who are in need of medical marijuana for all of its many possible uses to make your operation commercially viable.
Well, that's our presumption, too, still at this point. But we're getting there. And actually, the biggest problem that we faced in the district so far has been that demand has far outstripped supply. So, demand hasn't been a problem.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I have a question.
Might as well go back in.
My pleasure.
I appreciate you coming this evening. I requested that you guys come in, because you, I mean, you're doing it, so you can hopefully allay some of the fears that some of us might have. So, can you walk us through a typical customer? They come in, you guys buzz them in, they sit down in a lobby, they visit a doctor. How does it work?
Exactly as you said. I mean, although first they visit the doctor, the doctor writes the recommendation. Actually, it's done electronically in DC through the Department of Health. They also then register, they receive a card in the mail. Different in Maryland, in DC, they register to a particular dispensary. So we know exactly who our clients are. That's going to be different here in Maryland, I think. And so, when they come for the very first time, it's by appointment. We have about, we spend about an hour with them, talking to them, assessing their condition, reading the report from the doctor, trying to figure out with them what it is that they're trying to accomplish, what issues that they're dealing with, and what strains and forms of ingestion might be best for them. And then hopefully, usually, pretty quickly, we find the right combination, and then they come and they purchase their medicine, much like you'd go, or I'd go to CVS right here and renew my prescription.
So, do you limit the number of people in the lobby that you see in a day? I mean, could there be a line? I mean, how?
Well, we haven't had a line. We sometimes have maybe six or eight people in the lobby waiting. We only have one patient with a staff member, so if we have three staff members in the back in the dispensary, then we would just have three patients at a time. It works much like a pharmacy, where they would be speaking to, like I would at CVS, speak to a pharmacist and see them individually, and pay for my medicine and leave. One big difference, I guess, for us, and that, and that has implications in different ways for the neighborhood, is that there are, is that there are no benefits that help people pay for this, so this is expensive. And that's different than going to a pharmacy, because oftentimes, many of the people who are there are paying very little for their medicine.
Now, you know, like in Colorado and Washington State, you hear about the issues with, there's so much cash, right? Is it possible that a dispensary can only require someone to pay with a credit card, or does, do you have to just use cash?
Well, you certainly don't have to use cash, but you can't use credit cards. And unfortunately, credit cards at this point, and it could be different tomorrow, but the way the banking system works, that merchant services like that aren't available. But what our patients can use are debit cards. Anything with a PIN number can be used, and so they're paying for it directly. They're not putting it on a credit card and amassing credit card debt in that way. We encourage people to use debit cards. In fact, the fee that they would see, like using an ATM on their account, would be $2. So we give each patient that uses a debit card a $2 bill in exchange.
Oh, wow.
So that it doesn't cost them anything. And that way, we get, I would say, 75% of our patients pay with their debit cards, and not with cash. We also, we've been open since 2013. We began in 2011, because the process in DC was long, but we rented that space at the beginning of 2011. We've never been without the bank. So that's not been an issue, and we don't have cash issues. We don't have, I mean, we do have safes, but we make regular deposits of cash, and I would venture a guess that we have less in cash deposits on a weekly basis than the 7-Eleven, or Supergirl, or many of the other businesses in the neighborhood. And so that's not an issue, and we only have, we get deliveries twice a week from our cultivators in the district, so we don't have a lot of product at any one time on hand in the dispensary. So if someone were to break in at night, first of all, they would set off all the alarms, everything that they did would be on camera. The authorities would be there before they were able to get too far. But if they got inside at all, they would find three T-30 safes, those are jeweler's safes. You can't get into them with a blowtorch in less than 30 minutes. And if they did get in there, then they'd find, you know, a few thousand dollars, and a few ounces of marijuana, and no great prize. I mean, knocking off the BP station on the corner would be far more productive, I'm sure.
Because you're a new type of business, and, you know, there might be stigmas associated with it, do you guys have a special relationship with the police department? Did you go and solicit, you know, maybe one of the command staff members and say, "Hey, we're here, we're new in the community. Some people may not like this, we might have additional issues. Could we get extra patrols?" I mean, was any of that part of the conversation?
We have a very close relationship with the Metropolitan Police Department. First of all, we're regulated and inspected by them. They come on a monthly basis. They review our tapes. They're friendly visitors whenever they want. We also, we also have a security guard, and our security guards are all retired DC police officers, so they have a special relationship with them as well. We work closely, first of all, we've never had any kind of issue, any kind of problem, any kind of anything. But we've been able to work very closely with the police department in helping them solve other crimes at our intersection, because they use our tapes, and on many occasions to look at crimes. And we've also worked with a public defender, who's used our tapes to help exonerate people, too. So we do have that relationship, and we have no problems and no issues, and probably the most complicated thing with the police has been for a few of our patients who maybe don't feel comfortable purchasing marijuana with the police around, and still feel a little uncomfortable about the police's former role. But it's amazing how quickly we get used to changes, and how strange this seems before it happens, but how much it's taken for granted after it does.
And finally, can you give us a recommendation? I mean, you know, after being in business for so many years, you know, for, if you had a chance to, you know, give recommendations to the DC government when they were doing it, what would you tell us, so that we could make sure we don't have those problems, and residents would be comfortable?
Wow. I mean, we really haven't had problems. I mean, I would tell you, though, what we've experienced, and that's that the overwhelming majority of our patients live in Ward 4. They live in our neighborhood, they're thrilled that we're there. This has been life-changing for all of them. Our average patient is my age, looks like a lot of us here, dealing with all kinds of issues, whether it be chronic diseases, or just, or just the aches and pains of life that aspirin doesn't help, but oxycodin is way too much for. Our patients come, we're a destination for the other third or more. They come, and when they come to us, they come generally three times a month. They generally spend a little more than $100, and they generally shop in the neighborhood. We've worked closely with other businesses, so that our patients are known and appreciated in the neighborhood, and so that they know and appreciate Tacoma as well. So for instance, for our first year, we had a program with Supergirl, that every time somebody came, they got a free cup of soup, and then they'd go over to Supergirl, and they'd have their cup of soup, and they'd also buy a quart and take it home. And we were working with CT doing that as well on Fourth Street. And so we work closely with the businesses, too. We've been, since way before we opened, we've been a member of the old Tacoma Business Association, and have found that by communicating, and being open and friendly, and a good neighbor with the businesses and the residents in our neighborhood, that we, it's, we have literally had no problems, and there are literally no issues. And I also think that we brought a little bit more security to the corner, so that's appreciated. And we've, and the building, when we rented it, had, if you ever drove by there or went there for Chinese food and lived to talk about it, it was all tattered awnings and peeling paint, and I understand it looked better than the days when it was a brothel, but it looks like it fits into the neighborhood now, but there's no way, if you didn't already know that Tacoma Wellness Center was a medical marijuana dispensary, you wouldn't know it by just driving by.
And I have to confess, I sometimes go to Horace Dickey's. I didn't know you guys were there.
There we are. So we're not exactly a problem in that neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you turn around and go, I'll look down here. My three colleagues on
My three colleagues on this side have questions. Does anybody need him still up here?
I have one question.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, so just hang there for a minute or take a seat right there or councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was for Ms. Grigsby. It sounds like from what you've said, this council has very limited authority for precluding the opening of a medical marijuana in Tacoma Park. Is that right?
I think that's right. The state attorney general's office released a letter as an advisory opinion that said in their understanding, local governments, whether county or municipal, could not ban the medical cannabis operations. So if, that may not be what you're, if that's what you're asking, I think the understanding generally is that. I know Anna Rendell County has looked at prohibiting it completely, and the county executive has since edged away from that a bit, and they're looking at various types of regulation. The latest that I could find is something like 1,000 feet from schools and 2,500 feet from other dispensaries. They started out with 1,000 feet from schools and 1,000 feet from all residential and, you know, once they moved away from a ban. If your question is about locating them, then I think the council could do something similar to the discussion about Taco Bell, about a resolution that asked for certain kinds of criteria to be considered or something like that.
Okay.
That the council can ask for a zoning text amendment. That's a significant possibility.
All right, thank you. So I think one of the things that this council needs to look at is kind of anticipate what problems and challenges this might bring to the community and to make sure we safeguard the community. One question from your presentation that I had is that if I were to walk into a medical marijuana dispensary and I could get, you said, four ounces of marijuana, but if I were to drive down the street, then I get stopped by the police and they found this four ounces, that would be far in excess of what indicates an intent to sell. So I don't expect an answer from you, but I think that's something that we would have to understand from our police department, how they're going to recognize that disconnect.
I don't have an answer for that. My understanding is that partly through the registration process at the state level, there would be a way to check if someone had a recommendation from their physician and had registered and had gotten this through a licensed dispensary.
And it would have to be something that was in real time so that we didn't have people being detained for hours while this is being included.
We'll get an answer for you on that.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Councilor Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, if I could ask you a quick question and then Ms. Grigsby, I'll go back to you. DC appears to define drugs-free school zones as 1,000 feet within private daycares, elementary schools, vocational schools, secondary schools, junior college. Have you had, where their, my first question is, are there issues with regard to citing and proximity to schools in DC? And then just related to that and related to federal laws, has there been or have there been any issues with regard to that sort of proximity issue and the location of your dispensary or other process that you know of in DC?
Right. Well, a couple of answers. One is that the process was, in DC, was very different. So the first thing that we had to do was locate a property. And here in Maryland, that's really part of stage two. So people will be applying now, say, in District 20 with, they might have an idea of a property, they may even know exactly where they want to be, but they're not, but up to two dispensaries will be awarded in District 20, and they could end up being anywhere in legislative District 20. We had to have a property first, and the first thing that we had to have was a survey and measure from every one of the prohibited places, education centers, recreation centers, parks. For us, it's preschools and things like that, too. So we had to know going out that we were at least enough feet away. In DC, it ended up being that the law, that our local law says 300 feet from any of these places. But we know that, and again, it's really complicated and it's really weird and it's really unique, the differences between local and federal law. But we know that the Justice Department likes 1,000 feet. So we wanted to be 1,000 feet for many of these places because our whole approach to working with, not working with, but living at peace with the federal government would be to be sure that we don't do anything that we go out of our way to antagonize them. In the course of our, since we've been open, the Justice Department has issued several memoranda for the first time, really making statements about what they will accept and what they won't accept in these programs. And so we've been guided by that as well. So those are complicated issues. And the whole thing about the federal government is very complicated. But then within that complication, there's certainly these issues about distances from places where kids gather.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Stewart.
Wait. Mayor, I wanted to go back to our city staff.
And just maybe just one last thing in passing is that we would love to extend an invitation to any of you. If you'd like to come before or after hours for a tour, to come along the center and see what a medical marijuana dispensary actually looks like, please let us know and we'd be delighted to help. Thank you.
Can you leave your contact information with city staff? Thank you. Roz, I wanted to follow up on the options you suggested to us. And I guess I don't think that a ban is appropriate or effective. But I do think, given that the county is not, seems to be taking a wait-and-see approach, that there are some things we could do that are based on what seems to be happening in other places. So looking at the definition of drug-free school zones, 1,000 feet, seems like it would make sense. And I'll just note that, and I don't have the Maryland law up in front of me, but I recall that it talks about daycare facilities, all educational facilities, not just places where kids are by themselves. Because I think it's not just or even primarily about the worry that third graders are going to buy drugs, but it's rather about safety issues in general. So I think that the 1,000-foot school zone or whatever the Maryland school zone definition is makes sense. I'm looking at the DC one right here because that's what we were talking about. And related to that, I think, you know, just thinking about our business development program, I was a little puzzled by your answer because we, given that we know that a Montessori school, I believe we know that a Montessori school has bought that building and is in the middle of renovating it for a school, that it would seem strange to take a business that we know is in process of trying to open and potentially complicating it.
Yeah, we can show that. Do you know what the age range is on that?
I don't.
Okay.
No.
I wasn't making a judgment call about it. I was only saying that from the county's point of view of if you have a zoning code that says 1,000 feet from a school, it's an open school.
Sure.
They don't look at something that's in plan that we know is happening but hasn't yet. They look at what's in existence.
Fair enough.
We can look at it both ways.
And then I'm just, I think, other steps that we could take in terms of just being informed in this process, again, and it could be the basis of a resolution or other action that we take as a city council, but it's looking at the ways that places that have medical marijuana dispensaries or other dispensaries, looking at issues like proximity to residential zones and just what kind of commercial retail zones they try to cite them in, both from a perspective of neighborhood concerns and also from perspectives of the success of those businesses. So to me, it's about, you know, sort of the location with schools is sort of my first concern, but secondarily, what, you know, what kinds of retail, commercial districts make the best locations for dispensaries? Thank you.
Could I just comment on that for a moment? One of the things that I had kind of thrown up into the air was the idea of identifying criteria or kind of what your preference would be in a resolution, whether it's for a site to have certain characteristics or an operation to have certain characteristics or for it not to, that then applicants could say, plus, I mean, one bonus point is we actually, you know, meet the preferences of the city council in this location. So I mean, that's something that does not have a regulatory weight, but it may have a weight in the application process.
Well, and I guess what I was just suggesting is not inconsistent with that. So, you know, types of commercial zones, sort of extensive commercial areas.
When you say types of commercial zones?
I'm thinking of just really how big they are. So one council member talked about the campus of the hospital, another is the junction of University and New Hampshire Avenue where you have very extensive retail areas with significant parking, with all the other lots and lots of businesses in those locations versus some of the places where we have essentially a single commercial site on the location on a cross, you know, cross intersection with residential all around. So on a spectrum between those, I don't know if there's a better or worse end to that spectrum. I was also going to ask, you may or may not know, but DC versus Maryland law in requiring guards to be present on the site, are there differences or, and are they armed guards?
My understanding is that Maryland does not require it, and DC didn't require it either.
Okay.
Which isn't to say that obviously a business owner can make that arrangement.
And is your guard armed or not armed? Okay, thank you. Armed, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Stewart.
Thank you. I have a question for you. Sorry. To go back to the ZTA issue and the potential future Montessori school, I just want to make sure I understand, since the process is that folks have to put in their application now and we know that this Montessori school is likely to open in, I think, months, we're talking about, wouldn't following through with the ZTA actually be okay even though it's not there now because it would also be for the future as well, correct?
Well, let me back up a minute. The application deadline of November 6th is the stage one application. The applicant does not have to have identified a location.
Right.
The state expects to have a determination made of who gets those licenses end of December, early January. They then have one full calendar, one 365-day period to get the doors open. So it may be that if the, if council wants a ZTA, they ask the county, county goes through its public process, that may all be in place long before the doors open at any location. As of today, the Montgomery County zoning requirements don't have anything about medical marijuana dispensaries. And they don't have any kinds of regulations about retail that I know of that address the kinds of issues of proximity to schools or that kind of thing. So it's kind of a blank slate right now.
When we looked, when we looked at this, you know, we tried to figure out, was there something that was comparable that in terms of a, you know, a distance? And there wasn't any good guesses to that. There are some things that are 300 feet. We looked at 750 and 1,000 just as a way to show some, some sense of that. But it's not clear, even if the county council came up with something, what that number might be.
There isn't really an analogous type of business that we could use as a measure. So pharmacies are straight retail in county code. There's not a distinction.
Right. Yeah, I would just say that most pharmacies don't have an armed guard. I mean, some of them may, but our CVS are, well, our CVS doesn't in Old Town. Does the Walgreens have one? Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah.
It does?
I don't know. Yes?
It does? All right.
I don't know if he's armed.
Well, I guess that was a question because councilmember Mail had asked for that clarification.
The Tacoma CBS has been robbed.
Right. So.
Lots of places. So's mine. They all get robbed.
There's been a lot of research about the impact on dispensaries and crime. And so I spent a fair bit of time digging around on what that looked like. And the, while there are anecdotal stories of robberies, as there are of CVS and banks and other things, the most rigorous research that I saw indicated that there is no, I actually wrote down the language for it because I thought it was an interesting way to put it, not the medical marijuana legislation is not predictive of higher crime rates and may be related to reductions in rates of homicide and assault. And interestingly, robbery and burglary rates were unaffected by medicinal marijuana legislation. So they looked at dispensaries. There are several studies of individual cities like Sacramento, of states like Texas, and then of national studies looking at where and when dispensaries opened and where and when what happened to crime trends.
If I can follow up on that, I think one of the things that is a little bit difficult is that each of the states have very different rules and provisions for this. I think that no matter what, we would look very carefully at public safety and what's the appropriate kind of thought process about how do we, you know, how is a place cited? What are their mechanisms? How do the provisions within the Maryland requirements, you know, where might there be a problem or not so that our police would know how to appropriately look at that? I don't, you know, I think that the discussions that I've been in with other city managers and places that have a variety of kinds of marijuana dispensaries, whether they're medical or other, were all over the place. And the responses that I got about what was needed for those places were, you know, really differed by different communities. So, you know, I think that it's helpful that we have some rigorous studies, but we've not had a rigorous study in Maryland with these provisions. And so there's a little bit that we just have to look at and recognize that go in with our eyes wide open and make the best kind of thoughtful process that we can with the controls that we have, which aren't many.
Right. And I would just like to say that I think, as you suggested before, having some criteria. And I'd just like to say, I'm sorry that our county council is taking this wait-and-see approach. It sounds like there was a process that happened in the district with that dispensary, a back and forth with residents. And there were guidelines in place that helped the residents as well as the applicants for opening dispensaries, which I think at the moment, both us sitting here on the city council, as well as people putting in applications, are at a disadvantage.
I think that's true.
And I think it raises concerns that don't necessarily need to be there if there was clear guidelines in place. So I would like to see us have a conversation and maybe put together a resolution that says, you know, this is the maybe type of area or whatever we think is appropriate for that to provide more guidance. Thank you.
Councilor Grimes.
Thank you. My comment is about a tangential matter that councilmember Siemens raised. I actually looked into the question of possession of marijuana a couple of years ago in the spring of 2013. One of my constituents, who is a gentleman in his mid-60s, I'd say, who has a degenerate, he has Parkinson's disease, came to me because he was afraid he was going to get busted for marijuana purchase and possession. So I looked into the situation in Maryland, and it so happened that in the 2013 state legislative session, the state had passed what's called an affirmative defense in the case of medical marijuana. It was actually Senator Raskin who initiated this. So if you can show that your marijuana possession of up to one ounce, not four ounces, one ounce, is for medical purposes, and this extends to caregivers of 21 age or above, then you can get off. So that's the Maryland situation at this point. And I will only comment further that this reflects a destigmatization of marijuana and a recognition of consensus societal acceptable uses of that substance for serious purposes.
Councilor Schultz.
Couple, some observations. That is, is that if you have 1,000-foot areas that prohibit that prohibit a dispensary being located in a, adjacent to a school or preschool, then that means you'd also have to have a ZTA that would say that if you want to open one of those things, you have to be at least 1,000 feet away from a dispensary. In other words, you can't build a school that's within 1,000 feet of a medical. So, in other words, it cuts two ways. Is that the case?
I was just going to say, it, it looks like the Baltimore County legislation, which is 500 feet from schools, 2,500 feet from other dispensaries, it looks like it does include language that it would cut both ways. So, whoever's there first gets to claim that space. And then if a school or preschool or some other use wanted to move in, a protected use, they would not be able to move into within that sphere of protection.
Okay. So, that's, that's my, my, my observation.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that, I'm not sure that that goes with the Montgomery County provisions. I'll have to double check in that. If, for example, there are these regulations about distance from liquor stores.
Well, I'm just saying is that if, if this, if this dispensary that this, this Ms. Blaze wants to open, say it was in Tacoma Junction, and it had opened this year, then the Montessori school comes along and opens six months from now, then you've got a school within, I mean, it just makes no sense. I mean, what's the point of having this barrier, this distance?
I think the point is for knowledge. So, that if the school opened after a dispensary opened, they would do it knowingly, recognizing that the circumstances hadn't changed around them, that they opened a school knowing that they were already within that proximity. I think that's how it works for liquor sales.
That's, that's what I thought, too.
There is a protected zone for liquor sales.
Anyway, just, I'm just curious about, about that, how that might want, or how the county might want to make that work. Then I also observe...
No, I was just going to say, it makes no sense, because then it's saying that it's not really a safety issue for the kids. It's just to make people feel good, or else you couldn't just come along and put it in, because it's okay with me to put it here.
Yeah. But, you know, these are, I'm sort of in the observation state right now. I'm not ready to draw any, any conclusions about anything. Just that the larger we make those circles on the map, the fewer areas we're going to have. I would wonder like if a building like the 7676 Professional Building, which is pretty much a medical arts building these days for the most part, you could have, theoretically, if the owners of that building were willing, you could put it in there and it'd be on a second or third floor. Doesn't necessarily, wouldn't have to necessarily be a storefront situation. So, that's another conceivable possibility. And according to this map, it would be far enough away from Carroll Highlands Elementary School. But then I know that there's a daycare center, a couple of them that would probably prohibit it if we had that. I mean, there's the one above Tiffin, and there's another one in the, the Zions Lutheran Church, right next door to where Meals on Wheels offices are. So, if you draw 750 or 1,000-foot circles around those, you'd pretty much wipe out the whole crossroad, or most of the crossroads area for that sort of thing. So, I think we want to be able to think about that, that aspect of things. The other thought is that, given that in the District of Columbia, after several years of operation, there's only five serving a population, Lord knows how big the population is there, the likelihood of, and that the state will allow two dispensaries per senatorial district, it seems like there's going to be plenty of places where there aren't going to be anybody interested in opening a dispensary, because there's not enough population density to generate it. And if, say, if there's one or two, two in District 20, there's no reason that it necessarily has to be in Tacoma Park. I mean, we might say, oh, that's great. It's not going to be in Tacoma Park. Or we might say, oh, well, that's too bad, that it's not going to be in Tacoma Park. Because there might be people in Victory Towers, let's say, and a lot of other people in their 50s, 60s, and 70s with chronic diseases that was pointed out by our guest here tonight, who would really not rather have to, say, drive out to Burtonsville to be able to find a medical dispensary. I don't know. I'm just thinking about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
I just have to make a quick remark. None of us has a crystal ball, but I will still do a little forecasting, which is that I would foresee that in 2019, after the next state legislature is seated, and maybe Jim Valerio will, that's his name, isn't it? Will be, Joe, will perhaps not retain a committee chairmanship that we will have legal marijuana in the state of Maryland. And a lot of these concerns will be, about dispensaries would be moot, because people will be possessing, possessing and using this stuff all over the place, the way that they are in the district nowadays. So, just a little forecast.
Okay. Thank you very much for the folks who have come here and provided us with some information and introduced themselves. We really appreciate it. Next steps are, I imagine that we're going to have some discussion about whether we might want to come forward with a resolution.
I guess that's the question. You know, I think, I hear real mixed opinions, you know, mixed approaches. So, I don't know if...
Is that going to happen before the next council? Because I mean, anything...
I think the immediate thought as far as scheduling this work session was that if there was something that we wanted to do immediately to have done before November 6th, but I'm not sure how much effect that's going to have on things, given that's just kind of staged around. Thoughts, anybody? Really want to come up with something? We have two meetings left of this council.
I don't think it's that big of a deal.
I think it's helpful to have staff develop, given that staff have already spent time on this issue, right? To have staff develop some background information for us on actions taken by other government authorities or guidelines for citing.
I think that's good, but I'm not sure that we need to have that back before the election.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't sense an urgency.
Well, there is urgency. I mean, it's very important to residents throughout Ward Two. I get emails on this, many emails on this every day.
You do?
Yeah.
I've had, I've had 16 people weigh in, and 12 are completely indifferent.
All my residents have been preoccupied by Taco Bells. They see that as more of a threat than apparently.
One drug or another.
Put a drive-in window in this thing and see what you get. I said, put a drive-in window in this thing and see what you get.
Yeah, I guess you're right. Nobody complaining about zoning, man?
That's right.
All right.
I guess, is there direction to staff?
Do we, we would need to respond to something before the November date?
I don't feel, personally, I don't feel the need to do anything further.
It's, it sounds like there's no urgency to respond by November 6th, but there's a desire to continue to think about this and come up with some possible resolution that we could, my sense is, direct toward the county to say, you need to potentially do some additional work on what is in the zoning code as far as this use.
And working with our police department to see what needs to be changed, if anything.
So, to be continued. But it doesn't sound like any, any direct request of staff.
We had some questions tonight. You said you would get answers, too.
I certainly bring back...
But in terms of drafting something, it doesn't sound like we're there yet.
But, I mean, at the same time, Montgomery County's planning staff are also contemplating things. They're probably hearing from other municipal officials elsewhere in the county. So, there's probably processing going on throughout the county, as well as at the planning department. I think in terms of thinking what makes sense.
I guess I heard, I heard two, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think that's true, but it is very much a work in progress. As of Friday, when I talked with Maryland, Montgomery Planning Legal Counsel, Jeff Zients, he said there were no resolutions afoot, no changes afoot in Montgomery County. Certainly, it's being talked about all over the state. Washington County gave full endorsement for the first grow facility, as far as I think it's the first.
And I would just say that I've been in contact with county councilman Hunker's office, and he's looked into this. And, you know, I know other people have reached out to other county council members, and they're literally taking a wait-and-see approach. And so, I would urge us that if we have feelings regarding that there should be some guidelines in place, and I'll say again, not only for our benefit and our residents' benefit, but I also think for the folks who are putting in applications, I think we need to put a little bit more pressure on them to actually do something like Baltimore did, or Anna Rundell is looking into.
So, I guess, I hear there could be two different approaches. One is if you want to decide to have a letter drafted that goes from the council to the county council. I mean, that's one option. That actually is a quicker approach than a resolution. A resolution may be something that may take a little bit more time, that would give direction to, you know, as the application process goes forward, but...
Sounds like a letter would work.
I mean, I'm fine with where we're going. I'm just a little confused, because we have made lots of other decisions during this council session that affect the next one. So, the whole idea of doing some work now to be ready for November 15th, or November 24th, or, you know, follow-up meetings, I'm not, I'm not sure why we're marking it as a moment at which we wouldn't do anything to prepare for the next...
I'm not ruling out doing something, but I'm not hearing a direction yet, so.
But it sounds like there's agreement that a letter might be good to express to the, to the, to the county council, that they, rather than having a wait-and-see attitude, they might need to be a little bit more proactive in thinking about some, some potential direction, about distances, or something else in terms of designing code.
But I'm not saying that even has to be this council, to be a letter that's being prepared and then just a continuation of the work of this body when the new council is seated.
Can I be clear? I have no idea where the balance is. I think I'm hearing a balance that's tilting in the distance, in the direction of asking the council, the county council to address distances. That is not a concern that I have.
May I just ask for clarification? If staff is preparing a letter, it's, could you articulate what you would like that letter to say?
Can we get a straw vote, that there should be a letter in this current council?
How many people are interested in discussing what would be the letter?
Go ahead, if you want.
That's it. All right, then we can go on.
I think we've heard, I think we've heard some concern here tonight, that the county needs to take, make some clarifications as far as rules for these dispensaries. And we had some specific items that were laid on the table, not only by the council, but by the community development department. And I think it would be good to put those in a letter and send them to the county council. I don't think there's an urgency that we have to bring that letter back next week and all agree to what goes in that letter. But I can see an advantage to us at some point sending a letter to the county saying, you know, could you please do something on this, so we have the guidance we need?
Probably a short letter, a one-pager.
All letters should be one-page.
I'm a little puzzled by this discussion, because we do lots of things that don't go through a straw vote. It's generally things that staff don't want to do that take a straw vote to do.
I'm not saying, I don't, I have just heard really different opinions here.
And that's, that's true. All the time when we have issues that affect one ward more than another, we, we have a discussion about, you know, could we follow up on bus stops at, along Flower Avenue? And staff then start working on that project, knowing that it's going to take some work to make something ripe, to apply for a grant, to look at information about state support. And then it comes back to council for a vote. So, that happens all the time when we have localized issues in the city that have some sort of policy consequence. And in this case, we have what is at the moment a localized issue, which is a potential proposal that we've been informed of, to cite a marijuana dispensary, a medical marijuana dispensary, within 1,000 feet of a school that we know is under construction, on a property that's purchased, that has a lot of questions for residents, neighbors of Mayor Williams, people who, at least in Ward Two, and neighboring areas where I live, who tend to be in Ward Three, have asked me about, and are, people are expressing concern about that. And so, that to me reads like something that the city should be doing something about. And what they, what we may do is simply information and fact-finding, and that's what I focus on, is questions about what have other jurisdictions done with regard to distances from schools?
Right.
What have other jurisdictions done with regard to distance from residential areas? What are the best places to cite with regard to types of commercial areas, density of commercial areas? The question about 1,000 feet from schools is not really a zoning question. It's a question about federal law and drug-free school zone law, right? So...
Yes, which I don't think applies anymore. But I, but let me just say that I have, I hear two different kinds of approaches. My personal preference could be to identify a list of criteria, to bring back this documentation that you've asked for, so you have that information. And then if the council has, based on that, some criteria that they want to put in a resolution, I think that sounds fine. I, I wasn't hearing enough support for that, other than we certainly will provide the information. I'm not going to slow down providing the information. The alternative approach was a letter to the county council, or a joint approach. I don't...
No, I think that...
And just let me say, what I heard staff asking for was if there was a direction that this council wanted to give to staff. And so far, there hasn't been a majority of the council that wanted to give any direction to staff. So, it's not a question of staff not wanting to do something.
I heard three things rather than two. I heard council member mail asked for staff to spend some research time. I heard the possibility of...
And that's fine.
I heard separately, going beyond that, I heard the possibility of staff coming back with options. And then I heard the question of a letter to the county council. I support council member mail in asking staff to do some research, but I would not ask staff to come back with options. I think that in this case, I would think the council should look at the research results about what's happening in other jurisdictions, and then decide whether the council wishes to see options. I can support council member mail's request, if I interpreted it right, for staff research.
Yeah. Councilmember Mail is getting the pressure from his constituents, which is, and so you have legitimate needs to, and I would defer to that. And I would suggest that maybe the crafting of a letter could be some, you know, the outlines of it could be coming from you. You just rattled off about five or six different questions that we could put into, or you could use as a basis for pursuing information gathering. Whether that materializes in the letter or not, I'm not sure. But at least it would be something for staff, it would be direction for staff.
Yeah, I don't, let me be clear. I don't have any, I don't, I certainly heard some direction for additional information, which we will provide. That's not, that's not the issue. But what I wasn't clear about is what needs to come back to council, and in what format, and what timeline. And that's what I would like to know. So, at this point, if it's just to find out some more, this background information, we'll pull that together and bring it back. And then you'll have, then perhaps then you'll have a direction about next steps.
And if it's to take an action in the next couple of weeks, we can do that, if that's what we want to do.
Does that work?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.